7:00 PM and I'm calling to order the regular order of education for Indian Prairie. This is 204 on a Monday, October 19th, 2001. Jeanne, Jeanne Rayzak.
Ms. Dammie.
Here.
Ms. Dammie.
Ms. Dammie.
Ms. Dammie.
Ms. Dammie.
Here.
Ms. Neal.
Here.
Ms. Raynback.
Here.
Ms. Gruber.
Here. Ms. Dammie.
Ms. Dammie. Ms. Dammie. Ms. Dammie. Ms. Dammie. Ms. Dammie. Ms. Dammie. Ms. Dammie. Ms. Dammie.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you want our audience who were with us today that they keep coming? Do you ask that you wear masks at all times to track social spirits in the city? Would we have to move to our student representative's report? Student representative's report by a non-human from a people of very high school? Well.
No.
No.
Good evening. My name is Shawn Fieldman, the MB Student Council School Board Representative. It is my pleasure to represent Niqua tonight. The Niqua doors were recently opened for seniors who took the SAT on September 23rd and juniors who took the PSAT on October 14th. Social distancing is enforced with students placed at the feet of the park and masked their card for the entirety of the exam. Thank you to all of our teachers and proctors and good luck to students as they weigh results. While we cannot celebrate in person, Niqua students are still excited to show their Wildcat pride. Niqua recently hosted a senior card parade to celebrate all of our seniors in their final year in Niqua. Thank you to all who participated and to the faculty members who worked to make it possible. We are also excited for upcoming haunted homecoming spirit week, which will kick off Monday, October 26th. Events will include a school-wide scavenger hunt, student performances from marching band, dance, cheer, and teacher trivia and more. Moving on onto academics, we would like to thank all of our teachers and faculty members who began their transition back into Niqua buildings over the past few weeks. We appreciate the dedication they have shown towards their students throughout the year and are proud to welcome them back. We are also looking forward to welcoming back students who chose the selective in-person option to the Niqua campus starting on November 2nd. To prepare for this adjustment, our Monday schedule will be changing starting on October 26th with first period classes beginning at 7:25, excuse me, for all students. Almost all of our clubs have found ways to function virtually this year. Thank you to all the students and teachers who have worked to make this possible. Niqua athletics have also kicked off their fall seasons. Congratulations to boys golf for DBC champions, girls golf for regional champions, girls tennis who won sectionals, and girls swim and dive for DBC champions. That's all for the Niqua board report today. Thank you all so much for your time and as always, go Wildcats.
Thank you, Shawn. We do have public comment today, but therefore agenda items, so we're going to move on to the rest of our agenda. Right prior to our opening of school, we will have our public comment. So we move to our consent agenda and superintendent report, Dr. Tally.
Thank you, Mr. Rayzak. Members of the board and the Indian Prairie community, it is great being here at Matia for my first in-person Board of Ed meeting. I want to thank the Matia staff for what they did to make sure we were able to use this facility today. I also want to thank our communications team and our IT team to ensure we had equipment working and that all will tonight will work. We actually had an earlier loss of Wi-Fi earlier today. A big thanks goes to Mr. Todd DePaul for making sure that our materials, desks, and other facilities were ready for tonight. I am sure I have forgotten someone or an office as it was a collaborative effort of many people to make tonight happen. In prior Board of Ed meetings, I have reminded parents about the need to get their children immunized due to state requirements. I had also mentioned in prior meetings that even if students are in remote learning, they must have their immunization. The state last week announced that they are amending their requirements and that students who are in remote learning only are waived from the immunization only for as long as they stay remote learning. Any child who comes to school for in-person learning is still required to have their immunization. Additionally, if a child is participating in any extracurricular event at the school, that child will also need to get the prior immunization. Parents should contact their child's school's nurse. In a prior Board of Ed meeting, I mentioned that the U.S. Department of Agriculture had extended the waiver to the end of December that allowed all families to receive free meals as part of the lunch-breakfast program. I'm happy to announce that due to the recently passed and signed federal budget, the USDA has extended the waiver to the end of the 2021 school year. This means all meals, lunch and breakfast, are free to all families regardless if they are eligible or not eligible for free and reduced meals. I do want our families to continue to apply for free and reduced meals because the information gathered helps us receive federal Title I money. Our Title I money, which provides us with funding for additional staffing and parent engagement, is tied directly to the number of families that qualify for free and reduced meals. A drop in the number of families means a drop in our funding. Additionally, the state uses that information to distribute pandemic aid, so please continue to put in your applications. Tonight, I know the Board of Ed will vote on the equity statement. In light of that work tonight, I want to spotlight Dr. Rachel Mahmoud, a teacher at Georgetown who has published an article entitled "You Can't Be Culturally Responsive Without Being Responsive." We have very talented staff in Indian Prairie who are working on equity in a variety of ways. We applaud Dr. Mahmoud for her work. And finally, normally at the last board meeting in October, we present an overview of the school report card process and results along with data related to the district goals. While the state board will still produce report cards for our schools, they will not contain the data we normally expect to see due to the change to remote learning last spring. This lack of data also means that the Illinois State Board of Education was not able to calculate new summative designations for the 1920 school year. Instead, they have simply assigned schools the same designation they received from the 1819 school year. We will be sharing the school report cards with the board as soon as they become available. I will provide a few more comments in the COVID-19 report. Thank you, Mr. Rayzak.
Thank you, Dr. Tally. Now move to our consent agenda. I need a motion to approve consent agenda items D through F as presented.
I move that the board approves consent agenda items D through F as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Jeanne, please call the board.
Ms. Donaboy. Ms. Dammie.
Yes.
Ms. Raynback.
Aye.
Ms. Neal.
Aye.
Ms. Gruber.
Yes.
Ms. Dammie. Ms. Rising.
Yes.
Motion passed. We are now moving to our discussion item, which is the COVID-19 update reopening of schools. We do have public comment. It is time to public comment for agenda items. If you are here to speak to an agenda item, we will be taking their comment right now. Thirty minutes is allowed for public comment and each person is limited to three minutes. When addressing the board, we ask that you respect the confidentiality and safety of our students and school district personnel. We also ask that those addressing the board be cognizant that this is an open meeting and is available to all age groups. And as I said, you consider who the audience members are this evening and keep comments as appropriate. Public comment represents the voice and opinion of the speaker. There will be no feedback from board members during the meeting, but follow-up will be provided by an administrator as appropriate. Our first speaker is Gina Jones.
Thank you. I'm here as a parent who has spoken to other 204 parents as well as students in District 204. I would like to share the perceptions and thoughts collected and request that you take this information into serious consideration after tonight when next steps are defined. First, we all can admit everybody is struggling during these strange times and how our children's lives have been impacted. Currently, there's no perfect answer, just the latest data and instincts that we have to make decisions going forward. We get that. What has not changed during the pandemic is the importance of choice and voice. Parents should have choices and be able to voice their input. We parents feel that choice and voice have been buried somewhat until further notice. We have experienced little transparency with the board and district, which has led to not so much trust. It's very disappointing that parents must get louder and bombard email inboxes with messages in order for meaningful communication or response to happen. What we have seen and heard is options being taken away, options being denied with no explanation, options being defined without enough input, majority opinion from surveys to return to school were ignored. The perception is that this pandemic is too hard and it's easy just to keep everyone at home. But that doesn't work for teenagers who need to be in school for many reasons. Maybe home life is scary or anxiety and depression are on the rise. Today, there are wait lists to see child psychologists and psychiatrists. Some need structure and support to thrive. The percent of teens at risk is staggering. July data from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services states that 40% of females and 20% of males in grades nine through 12 reported they felt sad and hopeless almost every day. And 22% of the females and 12% of the males reported suicidal thoughts. The educational, social, and emotional needs of a student is just as important despite the risk associated with the pandemic. We as parents watch your actions, patterns, and behavior, and words only matter when actions show results. On January 13th, Mr. Tally's three-year contract was approved. The board expects a cohesive relationship with the district and board, especially during a pandemic. We expect parent impetus to be embedded into the philosophy of the board and the superintendent. Mr. Tally's passion was seen by the board when he was hired for doing what's best for students and families that make him stand out. Mr. Tally even said, "I come at this in a very collaborative manner and I want to work with you as we support your children." He said relationships are the base on which these points rely. He said he wants honest discussion. We parents also want to have an honest discussion tonight. What is your plan to work with the parents going forward so we can collaborate and provide the best scenario for our kids? They need us to work together and we need our kids in school sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tammy Williams. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Tammy Williams and I'm a parent of a Wobonzi Valley High School freshman. I'm here to speak with you all tonight about the mental health concerns of our children. We have seen charts and graphs presented by the board showing the strengths and challenges at each level of education in our district, and not one of those charts discussed mental health. Watching the decision-making process by the school board disregard the importance of mental health is concerning. This topic should lead your discussions of the whole child. The survival rate in children zero to 19 years old is 99.998%, with no documented transmission of student to student or student to teacher. And yet, here we are in the middle of October with two days on the schedule for in-person learning over the next three months. Why are we not discussing mental health? Why is there a continued stigma? Are we willing to sacrifice the support our children desperately require for a .001% chance? Keeping kids at home in front of screens, away from teachers, away from peers, adding to anxiety and depression for .001%. Where's the science? In July of this year, the CDC stated the importance of reopening schools across America this fall, and I quote, "No other setting has more influence on a child's health and well-being than their school." Schools offer critical social-emotional support to all students. It allows staff to recognize the need for intervention in cases of domestic abuse and neglect and the intervention of support when depression, anxiety, and suicidal ideation present itself. These are far more difficult to recognize and respond to through remote learning. During a typical school year, 67% of cases reported come from interventions by schools. Those issues have not gone away, yet we continue to keep these students at home for a .001% chance. The prolonged time away from school results in social isolation, depression, anxiety, suicidal ideation, increased drug and alcohol use, increased issues of domestic violence, all of which directly impact the mental health of our children. Why is this not a part of the plan in getting kids back into the building? You are the people voted into position by the people of this district, and we are confident you can figure out bell schedules, passing periods, and lunchroom configurations. As a parent, I am not confident in your abilities to recognize the fact that, as Mark Rising stated in last board meeting, "Our children are hemorrhaging." Let that sink in. Our children are hemorrhaging. It is negligent to dismiss these critical issues. According to the World Health Organization...
Ms. Williams, three minutes is up. Can you finish in a sentence or two, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Wait, excuse me. There are two speakers here. Let her finish. That's the least you can do. Finish, please.
According to the World Health Organization, mental health conditions account for 16% of the global burden of disease in children ages 10 to 19. Half of all mental health conditions start by 14 years of age. Depression is one of the leading causes of illness among adolescents, and suicide is the third-leading cause of death in children ages 15 to 19. Black screens, microphones off, disconnection, anxiety, depression, lethargy, and disengagement. We have been at this for seven months. We have asked the students to be resilient for seven months. Please do not let the importance of mental health fall to the wayside in favor of a decision made for the .001%. Look at all the data impacting our children. The educational, the physical, and mental health of our children are counting on you to do the right thing, and science is asking you to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker is Brad Wafter.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Brad Wafter. I have a senior at Matia Valley and an eighth grader that will plan to be here next year. I'd like to cover three points tonight. The first point is, I think, one that has gotten lost in the chaos of this COVID-19 moment. It's making history. I don't know if you realize, but never before in United States history have we quarantined the healthy. That's what we're doing. By not allowing students in school and saying that they must attend school from home, we are quarantining thousands of healthy students. The speaker before me did a very good job of explaining the cost, often unspoken, of that quarantine, so I will not cover those statistics in my talk. But beyond history that we're making here, I'd like to move on to talk about responsibility. Our governor has asked that school boards make these decisions as to how to handle in-class attendance. There's a reason why he's asked school boards to do this. He's realized he does not have the authority to make those decisions. He's also realized that it's going to make him very unpopular to take responsibility for that. So he's asked boards like this across the state to take their responsibility. Some boards have done that in different ways, but some have looked to others to take responsibility. It seems like this board is looking very heavily upon the DuPage County Health Department to take their responsibility. But they're not elected. They are not focused on the big picture. They're focused on health. You're focused on the bigger picture. They are scientists that do their best job to give recommendations. You don't have to follow them. In fact, I don't see how we're ever going to meet the Phase 5 recommendation of zero cases for an extended period of time. It's unattainable because not everyone will take the virus once it's available. So when will we ever go back to normal? I have one more point I'd like to cover, and it's a personal one. You've heard the stats about suicide. I have a dear friend, recently graduated from college, social worker. She was actually participating in an internship in one of our District 204 schools. She stepped in front of a train. I'm not going to blame it on anybody. We don't exactly know what was going on in her head, but her family thinks that her isolation was part of the issue that caused her action. I'm sure there's many stories like that if we dig hard enough. You have already said to parents that are concerned about this virus, "You can have your kids stay home and continue to learn remotely." That's wonderful they have that choice. Please give the choice to our kids that want to come back to school five days a week. Let the kids stay at home that want to learn that way and satisfy their parents' nervousness. I want my kids back in school five days a week. I want my senior to finish a normal year, and I want my eighth grader to know that he's going to come to a school that he can come to and learn in person. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It is now time for our discussion item. Dr. Tally.
Thank you, Mr. Rayzak. Members of the board and the Indian Prairie community, tonight you will hear updates and clarifications about our in-person learning plans. We know that there were questions raised by some parents about the elementary plans and the middle school one, and we want to provide clarity on what a day in the life of a student at those two levels will look like. We will also explain what is happening at the high school level. Before I turn it over to Mr. Akarius, our deputy superintendent, I do want to say a few words. As a school system that is charged with educating all students, we know that we have those parents who want in-person learning and parents who want to keep their children home for remote learning. As we walk the fine line between those two groups, we are trying to create a program that will meet both needs. No plan is perfect, as I have said in the past, and whatever plan we will use will have to be a compromise between both groups of parents. I am hopeful that everyone understands that concept. I want to thank the administrators and the teachers for their collaborative spirit. With that spirit, the pilot programs at the elementary levels, the schedule at the middle school level, and the work at the high school would not be possible. Mr. Akarius will talk more about those levels, but we could not have those pilots or the rooming and zooming happening at the high school level with some teachers who took the challenge to make it happen. Nothing is being done in the bubble. No plans are being made without engagement of different groups. I also want to acknowledge the hard and difficult work that our educators are doing now. None of what they are doing is easy. They are shedding blood, sweat, and literally tears. Just to give you some numbers, in the past 30 days, district users have hosted 125,000 Zoom meetings with 5.2 million participants and 23.5 million hours of live content across students, teachers, and staff. The support center received 5,875 support requests and resolved 5,900 support cases, working through historical cases received. Finally, I'm sure all of you are aware that the number of COVID-19 cases have been going up across the United States and more closely here in DuPage County. Our ability to continue to move to in-person learning is very much dependent upon our COVID-19 cases. We will use trend data to help us make that decision, and a more defined metric decision tree will be shared tomorrow. It is very important that we start to see a decline in our numbers. I cannot stress enough the importance for all of us to do our duty to help lower the case counts. To that end, I ask that you help ensure that you follow CDC guidance and guidance from the Health Department to help reduce our spread. This guidance includes remembering to wash our hands often, wear a mask whenever outside your home, watch your distance, staying at least six feet from the people outside of your immediate household, and avoiding crowds, and most importantly, staying home if you're experiencing symptoms of COVID-19 or if you have been in close contact with a person infected with a COVID-19. We need your help in helping reduce our numbers, or our ability to do in-person will be in jeopardy. Mr. Akarius will share more about where we are within DuPage County and information that just came out today. So, Mr. Akarius?
Great. Thank you, Dr. Tally and Board of Education members, for this opportunity to once again bring to you a discussion topic for returning to in-person learning. Our goal from the beginning has been to, our return to school goal has been to support a comprehensive educational program for the 2020-21 school year within the current guidelines provided by local, state, and federal health and safety officials. Hoping I can control it from here. All right, great. From the beginning, our opening school process has been to develop, in which we would create a plan for reopening, validate it with research and requirements of the Community Health Department, State Board of Education, and then monitor and modify, indicating that we would review our plan, look for ways to improve our plan, and be responsive to needs. At the center of this was public health and continues to be public health, but wrapped around that obviously is our instructional core, SEL, the resources, operations, and stakeholder communication. Within each of those areas, we focused on curriculum, students, staff, school schedules, staff schedules, and then you can once again see the things under operations, stakeholder communications, and resources. As we know and was stated earlier, we are still in Phase 4 revitalization, which does provide us the opportunity to be in school for in-person learning. Last time, we talked a little bit about DuPage County metrics, when those metrics came out. We have been in the moderate arena, which says that we can encourage learning models that maintain at least six feet of social, physical distancing, some to no mixing of groups of students and teachers throughout or across school days. Some students participate in virtual and some participate in person. We also have our minimal transmission where you encourage in-person learning with at least six feet of physical distancing between students and faculty and staff, and then you have substantial, which encourages 100% remote learning, but school officials should use their discretion and expertise to determine which populations of students should receive in-person instruction whose needs are less likely to be met by virtual instruction. The most recent DuPage County school metrics, this just came out today, was for the week of October 4th through October 10th, in which they've indicated that we have moved to substantial. Under this model, you'll see the different trends indicated, what they've increased to. Under this model, you'll see the different trends indicated, what they've increased to. You see the orange arrows up. We do not want to see arrows pointing up. We'd rather see the blue ones pointing down. One of the, the one area that moved this to substantial, a significant area, was just new cases per 100,000, which you'll see was at 119 per 100,000. Over 100 would put you in the substantial area. Yes?
Go back to the previous slide. So we moved into substantial. So now the Public Health Department encourages 100% remote learning?
They encourage 100% remote learning. Just to be consistent, because as you know, the DuPage County Health metrics were metrics that came about a little bit, I think closer, right after the school year began. In the beginning, we were looking at positivity rates. Then it moved to 11 regions across the state, and so we had started to share what metrics look like across our regions. We have Region Eight, which is DuPage and Kane. We have, we're also part of Region Seven, which is Will and Kendall. Not a lot of school districts go across multiple regions, but we are one of those. And then we've showed statewide. The most recent data we had was from October 15th last week, in which you see that the current seven-day average rate is at 8.4% in Region Eight, which is DuPage and Kane, and 8.2% in Will and Kendall, Region Seven. You'll also know that statewide is up to 5.1%. We just wanted to show our two counties because it's slightly different, but that our students live in, the majority of our students live in DuPage and Will County. You will see in Will County, we're at 8.2% as of last week, and in DuPage County at 7.3%. Once again, we would just want to talk about, as we bring students in person, we do take a lot of actions towards trying to keep both our students and our staff safe. Cleaning and disinfecting all high-touch items, desks, door handles, restrooms, will be disinfected each evening and throughout the day with all stakeholder support. There will be times when we encourage additional wiping down of things as we, you know, want to encourage as much, as many good habits as possible to keep as many people safe. Physical distancing, students and teachers must adhere to six feet of social distancing. We talked about this. We, we talked about it with the contact tracing protocols and the likelihood that if we can assure that six, students are seated six feet apart, we have a more than likely chance that they would not be considered in close contact, and so that would avoid them being quarantined from school. If students are, if a student tests positive and another student or teacher is within six feet of them for 15-minute period of time, they would be quarantined for 14 days. They would not be able to come to school for 14 days. That goes for staff members or students. That's why we try to ensure that we have that six feet of distance in classroom, which does limit us to about 12 students per classroom. In most of our classrooms at the high school, we do find that we can get closer to 15 students and maintain the six feet of physical distancing. Symptom checks, all parents must certify. This is where we need to all work together, and we need to make sure that we are not sending students to school who might experiencing any symptoms, and we do not want staff to come to school that are experiencing any symptoms. Currently, if, there will be a process where parents have to certify that their child is symptom-free. If the parent does not certify that their child is symptom-free, they will have to go to the nurse, who will then try to contact the parent, and from there, or go ahead and conduct a symptom check on those students if a parent cannot be contacted. So it would do some delay in their day. All staff must self-certify each day. Additional onsite symptom checking may be conducted. Personal protective equipment, face masks are required for all students and staff. Face shields are available for all staff. Hand sanitizer will be available in each classroom. And as mentioned before, we do have Plexiglas available for certain situations where we know that it'll be typically one-to-one and where they're going to be within six feet. Typically, that's for screenings or assessments with some of our specialized service providers. Transportation, when provided, will once again encourage physical distancing. Same household students will be seated together, and face masks are required. Building use, once again, no building rentals fall semester except Park District and YMCA. We are required to have an isolation room in the building as well as an extra room. The isolation room is designed, it's a location for students who do exhibit the symptoms. At that time, the nurse would call home for that child to be picked up if they are exhibiting those symptoms. We also need to have an extra room available in case we need to remove students from a room because of a student experiencing symptoms or testing positive, and then we would move those students to that addition, extra classroom that is available. Home isolation is when somebody does test positive. That typically lasts for 10 days. We did talk about it last time, and the person should be symptom-free. And then quarantine is those who come in close contact with someone that tests positive, and that's for 14-day period of time. We want to talk about, a little bit about students who have been in our building so far. We've had STEPS has had 29 young adults in the building for the past month, and we'll welcome another 26 young adults on November 2nd, 2020. This is all pending, hopefully our metrics going in the right direction. We've had six students in program achieved at Wheatland Academy, attending twice a week. We'd have over 50 students have been receiving special education services at the middle school level, 60 at the high school level. At each of our elementary schools, we've had students coming in for special education services. Every element, and we've had over 1,400 vision and hearing screenings have been completed. And then several schools have brought in small groups of students to start testing rooming and zooming. When we talk about that, that means students in the room and students at home and trying to provide instruction at the same time for those students. Right now, we've, we've done some specific at the high school, looking at that. We've actually done a little bit of surveying there to ask what their experience has been like. We've tried the microphone slash speaker at a couple other levels, like at middle school and elementary, to see what we, what the sound would look like and so on. But part of our bringing in more classroom groups of students, both now for our elementary pilots, which, as you know, we started last week on Thursday and then continued on Friday with other half of students. But we will continue to try to see what we can do to best meet the needs of all of our students, those who are in school as well as the ones at, at home. So we'll continue trying those things out. Just wanted to talk a little bit about the hybrid selection. As you know, we have done some surveys and we have talked quite a bit about the importance of numbers. A lot of that relates to how many students we can fit in a classroom. Without knowing those numbers, it's hard for us to decide, you know, exactly whether we can do two days, more days than that, full days, half days. And then looking across, being a large district and looking at equity, should we be similar or consistent across all 21 elementary schools, across all seven middle schools, and across all of our high schools? So those are some of the challenges we've faced. It's been good to get actual numbers of seeing who's choosing to come in person so we can see how those will fit and see what our numbers can handle within our building. You'll see a range here from 43% was overall, and you'll see it ranges anywhere from 37% to the highest is 48% at one of our grade levels. Then you'll see it by buildings. Little, it varies quite a bit more than you would see at our grade levels. You'll see on there's a couple schools down at 28% to the highest ones at 61% of wanting to send the children in for in-person instruction. Next, there was a survey administered to teachers. The question was, which statement best describes how you were feeling about face-to-face learning? 51.02% of our teaching staff indicated that they did not feel comfortable returning face-to-face. That does not mean that they're not returning face-to-face. The question was specific about their comfort level returning face-to-face. There are numerous reasons that would cause staff not to feel comfortable. One, obviously looking at metrics and numbers. But there are other concerns about, you know, how's technology going to work? How are, what's it going to look like to teach students at school and students at home? And just, you know, concerns that are associated with the pandemic. So that is a comfort, not an indication of how many will be coming for in-person services. 28.46% were neutral about returning face-to-face. I will say that this survey was conducted prior to the most recent increase in metrics, and we had 20.52% have no problems returning face-to-face. We did have about a 90% fill rate on this survey. What we must learn from our October and November schedules. So it is important. Everybody sees that we are starting with small groups of students coming in, and we were very clear that we wanted to pilot that, and because we need to learn from that. There really isn't a blueprint from it. We are in constant conversation with other school districts, both who've been in-person or in hybrid models, as well as ones who are remote, and how they're trying to transition to that. We need to look at opportunities to improve our safety protocols and procedures. We think we have great procedures outlined, but we always know that we can improve it, and once we see students going through those procedures, it gives us the opportunity to adjust any procedures. We want to make sure that we look at any opportunities to improve our streaming capabilities. So we want to look at, if we are going to have teachers who have students in the classroom and students at home, how can we make sure that we make that the best process possible? Opportunities to increase in-person learning. We know we're starting with small amounts, and we're looking at, if we do this well, can we increase those opportunities? And looking at the timing to increase that opportunity. We also want to try to improve remote learning. And we're always looking at how we can improve. So while we're trying to improve in-person learning, we're also trying to improve remote learning. As I indicated, as some staff have tried to room and zoom, some students have indicated that they, some of our remote learners have indicated that they did like that experience because they got to see a little bit more of the teacher interacting with students. And some were neutral about it, but some were very positive about it. And that was at the high school level where we heard some of that feedback. We also want to look at, are there opportunities to improve teacher workload? We know that this is a concern. Our teachers are working very hard. There's a lot on their plates, and we're looking at, like right now at our elementary pilots, our, our teachers are teaching in-person in the morning, and then they're zooming in the afternoon every day. We know our middle school teachers, when we indicated those schedules, would be, you know, teaching students in-person and some at home, and we're looking at, how can we find, how can we help our teachers manage that? And we're concerned about, you know, those levels, the stress there, the workload there, and how we can support them. We're looking at our capacity to utilize other staffing resources. Are there other staff members in the building that we can use to, to help us with either remote learning or in-person learning? You know, what is available? How many subs do we have? How many teaching assistants do we have? What other teachers in the building can we look at to support our models? Capacity to manage contact tracing across all buildings. This is a big deal. If we notice that we have a lot of COVID-positive cases in our buildings or a lot of students with symptoms or staff with symptoms coming into the buildings, and we have to then contact trace, which is quite a bit of work that our nurses, many of our nurses have gone through a certification process to do so, where they have to identify how many students or staff were they in contact with, other people in the household, and trying to identify where this might have stemmed from and see if that leads to any other situations that might impact our buildings. Capacity to manage lunch in our buildings. As you know, one of the, we're trying this at the high school level to see, can we handle lunch? Capacity to increase busing transportation. There's been a lot of questions about, you know, can we bus half the students in the morning and bus the other half the students in the afternoon? We know right up front, if we looked at that, there's quite a bit of financial impact to try to do that. Very expensive financial impact, but we're looking at, do we have some opportunities to do that? And we want to look at our capacity to disinfect both the shared spaces as well as shared equipment. Those are certain requirements we have to follow, is how do we, you know, how do we manage that? Especially the shared objects that might be critical for learning. With that, I'm going to ask Laura Rosenblum, Assistant Superintendent at the elementary level, to come up to talk a little bit about our elementary pilot that's been in place starting last week, and any concerns moving forward.
Thank you. Good evening. It is absolutely my pleasure to tell you about our elementary plans for our hybrid model. We know that many students are thriving in our current remote learning model, but we also know other students are really struggling being remote. Our hybrid plan makes it possible for us to meet the needs of both types of students. Our goal is to serve all students to the best of our ability. With our plan, every child who wants to be in person can be in person. Our other goal is that all students will receive two and a half hours of live instruction each day with their teacher. This was very important to our teachers because they wanted to be sure that they saw all of their students every day, which was really one of the reasons we revised our original plan of whole days. Our teachers have found when being on Zoom leading instruction, it takes their full attention and concentration to meet the needs of students on Zoom. They felt that live streaming for our youngest learners would diminish their engagement level. Last week, I had the opportunity to teach a kindergarten class, a fourth-grade class, and a fifth-grade class, and I saw for myself the difference in the developmental levels even of our elementary students. For our fourth and fifth graders, they had greater ability to be focused and to stay engaged during the lesson, where honestly, when I was on with our kindergartners, I had to have every ounce of my energy focused on their cute little pictures to make sure that they were following along and staying engaged. We decided that we wanted to do as much as we could with teachers focusing solely on their in-person students or on their remote students, but we did see some possibility for intermediate students. So our pilot teachers are trying some rooming and zooming, as Mr. Akarius mentioned, or live streaming for some of our social emotional lessons, and we're even going to try it with our math. We will continue to explore ways to engage students at the highest levels remotely and in person. Next slide, please. To help illustrate a little better what a day may look like for a student, here is a sample schedule. I do want to emphasize though, like this really is a sample. The, the schedule that will come home for your individual child's class will look different because we will still need to stagger specials times, intervention and enrichment blocks, as well as our accelerated math blocks. But this at least gives you an overview of what their schedule might look like. If you notice, in the far left box, that's what the in-person students would be doing. The first side is when they're in school in the morning, and the second side is when they're independent in the afternoon. On the far right, you'll see our remote students, what they would be doing in the morning, independent, and then what they would be doing live for Zoom in the afternoon. The blue boxes are all, or the shaded blue boxes are all areas where students would have an opportunity to have that live instruction.
We do want to say that this is an actual schedule of what's going on right now in one of our pilots. So that's why we want to say it is a sample because it is of one, just a particular one going on right now.
And you can see that the time allocations mirror and repeat in the AM what they do for the PM so that we want to make sure that all students are having access to high-quality math instruction, literacy instruction, social emotional learning, et cetera. We do know that the biggest concern for parents and teachers alike is the amount of independent time for our youngest learners. We are working hard to plan a structure and guidance that will support our students during this time. Teachers are working to connect the assignments and opportunities for practice to the work that they did during live. to the work that they did during live instruction. Meeting with students every day makes this possible. For example, when the PM session ends for the students that have been live, it's very easy for teachers to say, and then tomorrow morning, when you're independent, you're going to continue this activity, or this will be the follow-up. Our teachers are also being mindful of the amount of screen time for students and ensuring that they're providing activities and assignments that can be completed away from the computer. Teachers have also been very thoughtful about wanting to make sure the directions are clear and easy to follow. They've been working on video directions, video lessons, Google Classroom updates, and other ways to support students during that independent learning time. For science and social studies, which as you've seen is mostly independent, to be able to do social studies in particular, you need to be able to read. And so our teachers are really making sure that we're focusing on those reading, writing, and math skills, but they also incorporate social studies and science. So for social studies and science, we do have video instruction that does support those two content areas. We have Mystery Science and Learn 360 as two examples. These videos are aligned to our curriculum and have been organized for teachers to use. But science and social studies also does occur during our live literacy instruction with nonfiction texts that are selected. The other thing that's really amazing about our teachers is that they continue to do a wonderful job making adjustments. I just spoke with a teacher yesterday, oh, yesterday would have been Sunday, last week, sorry, who had shared that she noticed her teachers, or her students, were having difficulty with the current social studies lesson. So she added that to her live time to make sure that her students understood the content that they were working on independently. A couple of other great ideas that have evolved, we're working to add additional synchronous time during independent time. That's one of the examples that you see that's shaded in blue on the independent days. Our curriculum and instruction department is developing STEAM activities, science, technology, engineering, arts, and math, for each grade level that they will host live. Our specials teachers have also been creative and are incorporating a connections time during independent time, where students can check in with their art, music, or PE teachers to ask questions or to follow up on work. Additionally, students may be participating in instruction outside of their traditional AM or PM times. There may be enrichment or acceleration groups offered when students are independent. These schedules will be clearly communicated with families and students, so they know exactly when to log in. Next slide, please. So our elementary pilot, as you've heard, did just start this past week. We had thirty-one teachers and over three hundred, three hundred students at eight schools that participated. Thursday and Friday were our first two days, and it was amazing. Our students and staff did a fabulous job for our in-person students and our remote students. I'll share a little bit about the in-person first, since this was the part that was newer. First of all, the implementations of the procedures for COVID were impeccable. Staff and students did a great job wearing masks and handwashing, sanitizing frequently, and remaining six feet apart. One of our early child speech language pathologists had individual yoga mats spaced out for each student, special laptop table trays with their names on them, and all the supplies they would need individually bagged and on the laptop tray. It even included little colored cars on sticks because they were working on learning their colors. In addition, Ms. Cassidy did a great job, including handwashing and hand sanitizing into the students' visual schedule. It made it easy for staff and students to remember and follow throughout the day. At McCarty, our kindergartners got to practice exiting the school six feet apart. The dots on the floor helped, and with a little practice, they had it down-packed. It was really fun to hear the perspectives of teachers and students. Our teachers said, "It felt so good to be standing up and teaching." Another teacher said, "I had no idea that student was so good on math. On Zoom, she wasn't as engaged." When I asked students to share with me one thing that they liked about being at school, they said, "I'm actually understanding math." Many students shared, "I get to see my friends." Another student said, "I, I got to get up, get ready, and get on the bus today." And the last student, a little boy, said, "This is a game changer." One of our pilot teachers, Mr. White, said, "The hybrid model worked phenomenally. I was able to meet with small groups in the AM and PM. I had reading groups, writing groups, and math groups. Both the morning and afternoon, or in other words, the in-person and the remote students, benefited immensely. I felt like I had more time." Teachers also shared that it was a really smooth transition to the new model. Students knew exactly what to do and where to be. One teacher, Ms. Kroll, was super excited when she saw a student's writing assignment being submitted on a Saturday. She knew then that the student was invested in the writing they were doing, if she wanted to even finish it on the weekend. As Mr. Akarius said, we are learning many things through this pilot that will help us as we bring more students back. Our pilot teachers continue to meet, and we're going to be sharing more information. It's only been two days, but we have great plans to share more information. We've already surveyed them and planned to send out to the rest of the teachers an update. And then we'll have additional opportunities for teachers. We're going to do kind of a panel thing where they can actually interview the teachers to get some of their questions answered about what it'll be like when we start our hybrid model. Next slide, please. Our early childhood pilot is also going very well. We have classes at the Prairie Preschool Center and classes at Graham. One of our brand-new three-year-olds, literally, A, he fell asleep on the bus, but when he arrived to school, he was so excited, he literally skipped from the bus into the school. Another one of our returning four-year-olds had made so much growth since they had last seen her, that she really became a leader. She knew the routines, and she showed the three-year-olds how to follow them. In both places, the COVID safety protocols were well-followed by all, and the schedule is working very well. We're excited to bring more students back at each of these levels. Our next step will be the start of the hybrid model for all early childhood to second-grade students, which will start on Thursday, November 5th. A group and B groups are be, being determined now and will be shared with families on Monday, October 26th. And as it has already been stated, the plans moving forward are, of course, contingent upon the current metrics and the guidance from the state and our Board of Education. Next, you will get to hear from Mr. Hillman about the middle school model, and then I believe at the end, we'll all be available for questions. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Tally, thank you for allowing me to come forward and talk a little bit about the work that has been happening at the middle school level. Before I delve into that too much, I would like to thank all of the middle school principals, the assistant principals, the directors from the CNI department, and many of the teachers who have been meeting to discuss instructional strategies that are going to be necessary in order for us to implement the hybrid learning program. Their work is going to be instrumental in being able to make all the things that we would like to do possible as we transition into the hybrid learning model. So I would just like to give a huge round of applause to them, because I know that that work has not been easy, as they try to think about working in two different worlds all at the same time. So getting to the middle school program, if we are allowed to proceed based on the metrics, the return-to-learn plan for second quarter for the middle school largely, largely remains unchanged from what was presented to you previously. Middle school students who attend in-person instruction will be divided into two groups and attend two days a week, from 8:00 AM to 12:59, to receive their instruction. On days students are not at school, they will complete asynchronous or independent and synchronous or live assignments and activities. Students who remain in full remote learning will continue to receive independent instruction or live instruction from their teachers, and also complete asynchronous assignments or activities. In-person days will be Tuesday and Wednesday, and then Thursday and Friday. Mondays will be a day of remote learning for the entire class. This plan allows students to retain their same course schedule and teachers for the remainder of the second quarter. So I am going to ask Mr. Akarius to go forward for just a moment in the, in the program to look at the schedule. So here, we will see that the Monday schedule has remained unchanged. We will move to the hybrid, when we move to the hybrid model. Mondays will continue to operate using the same guidelines as the beginning of the school year. Students will follow a shortened version of their day from 8:00 until 11:55 AM. Students will see their teachers through Zoom. Teachers will be working with the whole class through live instruction for at least fifteen minutes. Mondays will serve as a preview and a review of learning. And then at that particular point in time, they will also have the drop everything and read from 12:30 to 1:00, and the genius hour will continue to take place from 1:00 until 2:00. And then from, and, and students will also then have the opportunity to work from 2:00 until 3:00 and independent work. Where things change a little bit is where we get into the Tuesday, Wednesday, A-days, and Thursday, Friday, the B-days. Students in Cohort A, the A-days, as determined by the alphabetical split, will attend school in-person from 8:00 AM to 12:59. Students will have a break and a lunch from 1:00 until 2:00, with asynchronous learning from 2:00 until 3:00. The B-students on that Tuesday and Wednesday, students in the B cohort, as determined by the alphabetical split, will be at home, zooming into the classroom with their remote learning peers. All students will be eating lunch at home. On Thursday and Fridays, the days flip. Students in Cohort B will attend school in-person from 8:00 until 12:59. Students will have a break and lunch from 1:00 until 2:00, and asynchronous learning from 2:00 until 3:00. A-students, students in the A cohort A, will be at home, zooming into the classroom with their remote learning peers. All students will again eat lunch at home. So then the remote learners. Students who choose to continue learning from home will follow the same schedule as our hybrid students. Remote learners will be joining, will be joined by the hybrid students who are learning remotely for that particular day. Remote students will zoom into the classroom Tuesday through Friday. All students learning remotely are to be ready to engage with their teacher and their in-person peers promptly at the start of every period. Tuesday through Friday, students will have a break again for, for lunch from 1:00 until 2:00, and asynchronous learning from 2:00 until 3:00. All students will learn remotely on Mondays, and the Monday schedule will remain largely unchanged. Now, to help give you a little bit of an example of what that hybrid kind of learning, where both, where students are learning both in-person and at home through Zoom, we have a little video, so if Mr. Akarius could go back in the slide. And at this particular point in time, I've been told that if I ask somebody back there, that they will indeed show the video that is linked there at the bottom of the screen.
Good morning, everyone. I'm here with Mr. Shide, and he was able to set up his classroom in the way that he really thinks is going to work out really nicely for both the hybrid model, the in-person students, as well as the students who are at home. Chris, can you walk us through what you've got going on here?
Absolutely. So I wanted to be able to utilize my SMARTboard, be able to walk around in front of, you know, the students that we do have in the classroom. But I also wanted to be able to make sure I could monitor those students at home and be able to see them. So what I've done is I've set up my, my second monitor over here with whatever I want displayed over here on the SMARTboard. So right now, I'm currently sharing my screen, so the students at home can see this exact notes packet, and then the students in class, of course, are seeing this. And so then, if we go ahead and we, you know, do some notes over here, students in class can see it, students at home can see it. And then if you walk over to the computer there, you can actually, you know, see whatever students are in your class. So right now, we got, you know, Jordan Courtney in there. But then while I'm teaching, students can be looking at the shared screen. They can, you know, minimize the shared screen, and they can actually see me in front of the classroom from, from afar. And then I can just walk over here real quick, see if there's any hands raised, see if there's anything going on in the chat. And while I'm up here, I can actually see the faces or the, you know, the black tiles and students' names on them, you know, from the, from the classroom, so.
Awesome. Thanks, Chris. Appreciate you showing us this. Hopefully, this is helpful, everyone. And of course, Chris and I also talked about how the microphone might be helpful for those students who are at home to be able to hear his instruction. Have a great day, everyone. Happy Thursday.
Thank you. So that was a video produced, and Mr. Lowridge would probably laugh at me if I said it was produced, but that was produced by Mr. Lowridge and Mr. Shide from Skullon Middle School. And this is one of the countless examples that's happening district-wide of teachers, building principals, and instructional leaders working together to be able to make sure that everybody walks into school when we start with the hybrid learning feeling as prepared as they possibly can. The reality is, is that everybody is probably a first-year teacher right now, and they're going to continue to be a first-year teacher when we start this process over again. So we're doing everything we can to reduce some of the anxiety that's associated with this. Mr. Giovini, Giovini from the Curriculum and Instruction Department has did a wonderful job of putting together many resources that we can begin sharing with staff, so that way they have both the technical side of how to plug everything together and make everything work, but also the instructional side. Now that I've got all the wires connected, I've got the screens hooked up, now how do I make sure that it's effective for students? So we are working on that as well. The other piece that I kind of wanted to walk you through tonight is just a reminder of some of what it's going to look like, not just from the standpoint of teaching and learning, but also from the standpoint of what is it going to look like when students are in the building? Because that's another part of coming to school when we come back in person. Just a reminder that we will ask all students before leaving for school to go through and do their self-check and to be able to report that. We're going to be sending out directions on how to do that shortly before school, before we have students returning, so that way they can do that and know what that looks like. That is an expectation, and Mr. Akarius has already addressed that. We are still also providing bus transportation, and we've been working through the bus transportation procedures, about how is, where do buses drop off? What time do they drop off? When students exit the bus? Where are they going to go? How are they going to get into the building? How are they going to be getting to their classes? So we've been working through the logistics of returning students to school in that fashion. We've also been doing the same thing for pickup and drop-off, because we are going to have parents who elect to drive their student to school. What is that going to look like? How do we make sure that that is effective and efficient? Inside the building, we have also been making sure that there is lots of signage with directions about how to walk, what side of the hallway to be on, what direction you go when you're moving in this hallway versus another hallway, up staircases, down staircases, all of those things that are necessary to make sure that we can practice good social distancing. And then we have also been working on signage to remind students to wash their hands, have their mask on, and to be able to use hand sanitizer. Another piece, if we could go forward to the bell schedule for a moment?
Mr. Hillman, I just wanted to thank you, because I know I had asked that question in the last board meeting of, paint me a picture of how it was going to look like in the middle school. So I greatly appreciate that, because I think what that video showed is that the teacher's able to be at the front of the classroom, have the video camera on them still, so the students can see them clearly at home, and the teacher's able to maintain social distancing. So thank you for putting that together. I appreciate it.
Not a problem. And again, there are many videos like that, and that was all the work of Mr. Lowridge and Mr. Shide. I just happened to create, professionally borrow their work for tonight's presentation. One of the things that's not here that you will notice is we did not put transition periods into our bell schedule, which is a fixture associated with almost every bell schedule that you've ever seen at the middle school or high school level. We did that because we realized that in order to be able to move our students throughout the course of the day, we are going to have to think about transitions in a completely different fashion. So each building has been working with their instructional leadership team to talk about what transitions are going to look like and what students are going to be moving when. So while first period may technically, according to that schedule, last until nine o'clock, there very well could be some students who are actually transitioning closer to 8:55 or 8:50, and some students who are going to be transitioning closer to 9:05 or 9:10, depending upon how we have to structure that to be able to make sure that we don't have everybody in the, in the building transitioning all at one time. So there is going to be some play with inside of that schedule to make sure that we do not have all of the students who are in the building in the hallways transitioning at the same time. So that is, that is being worked through. The other piece for the student day is we've traditionally had lockers. We will not be utilizing the lockers when, when students come back. They will be utilizing backpacks, as we do have more space within our classrooms now, as we can only fit between twelve and maybe fourteen students, if we're lucky, in some classrooms. So we will have a little bit more space that students will be able to use their backpacks. We are making sure that- We are making sure that all the desks are socially distanced. As I said, most of our classrooms are going to be holding twelve students. We do have a couple of larger science classrooms that could probably hold fourteen. And we're going to judiciously use those for both science classrooms and also for some of our classes that mathematically, the A-B split just isn't quite perfect to be able to get us under that twelve number. And then one last thing that I did just want to touch base on is that in that schedule, we had to leave the lunch period. So at the middle school level, lunch usually takes place during four, five, and I think seventh period. And so what we've had to do is leave that into the schedule. And during that period, it's going to almost be a, a very structured and organized supervised study for students to be able to get work done, be able to receive interventions if they need them from both strategic reading teachers, special education teachers, interventionists, and also potentially have some time to meet with teachers and to go over some homework that they are still having questions about. So it will not be what I used to think of in high school as a study hall, but it will be significantly more structured, as there will also be a significantly small number of students in there, because remember, most of our classrooms can still only have twelve students in there. So just one other thing that we wanted to touch briefly on. And at this time, I think I've hit all of the main points, and I want to turn it over to Mrs. Reekstra. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Okay, at the last Board of Education meeting, our principals shared this slide that's on the screen right now and the plan for beginning an in-person pilot on Mondays beginning in November. Using Mondays for our pilot was a strategic move designed to protect our Tuesday, Friday teaching blocks in the event that any local health metrics changed or quarantines could be imposed. We felt the Mondays could withstand disruptions and changes without impacting the core of our instruction, which takes place during our Tuesday, Friday teaching periods. If you look at that schedule up there, the only difference that actually happens is typically right now on Mondays, we have thirty-minute teaching blocks, and those are going to be increased to approximately forty-five minutes as we move into our November pilot.
On that Monday, the school's going to start a lot earlier that day.
Okay, if the metrics shared by local health and governing agencies support the move, we are planning to bring students back into our schools for in-person learning on Mondays in November. You can see the breakdown involving which students would be included. This limited attendance structure was designed specifically to allow schools to test practices and protocols, to provide time for some student orientation activities to take place, and to prevent any disruption to our Tuesday through Friday teaching structure in the event of mandated pauses or closures. In talking with several people during the last few weeks, we realized that while we often talk about the protocols and the restrictions, we may need to revisit what these really mean when we're planning for a return to school. And I know Mr. Akarius talked about several of these, but the desks have to be six feet apart, limiting our student capacity in classrooms to between twelve to fifteen in a room. We also need rigorous educational instruction to be offered for both in-person and our remote learners. Our students at home are just as important to us as those in the classroom. Mondays are going to give us a chance to really expand our teaching practices. You've heard about our room and Zoom experiments taking place in the high school. I had the honor of watching Tiffany Stock teach a calculus class the other day and, and demonstrate her rock star teaching skills. And it was just, it was really amazing to see the kids in the class learning, interacting with the teacher and the teacher interacting with the kids at home. And it just, it shows a lot of the opportunities that are going to be ahead for us in that area. We're also restricted to having only fifty people in a large, any kind of large area. This includes the adults in the area. So when we're finding spaces to accommodate a lunch service, this has created some special challenges. The ripple effect of that is that in finding extra spaces, we're looking at other places throughout the building being impacted, including our LMCs. Practices related to the enforcement of safety-related regulations like social distancing, the face masks, self-certification, those are also things that we want to be tried and tested during this time. And new restrictions related to the sharing of equipment and materials will impact and change the way we do things in many classes. The Monday time is going to give us time to really figure out how to operate in this new norm. Now finally, I'm sharing all this with, for transparency purposes, but I want to be very clear. Our principals see these things as challenges. They don't see them as barriers. And they've been working very hard to address each of these. They firmly believe that they can do this. After our last presentation, we heard from several people encouraging us to accelerate our plans. We believe that we can do that now. We've already started to look at how we could move forward to increase our in-person learning opportunities as early as December, if local and state health agencies approve the move at that time. What does this mean? We actually spent the last week talking with stakeholders across the district. We met with our PTA leaders as well. Our work at the high school level has always been strategic in design. We want to continue to move forward thoughtfully and safely. Any December plan needs to be aligned with our current model and hopefully and potentially would flow into second semester as well. Our goal in moving forward would be to collaborate and communicate with all of our groups in creating the best educational plan possible for our high school students. We've, yes. Yeah, I'm actually there right now. So, yep. So our stakeholder group is a committee of students, staff, parents, and administrators that we've compiled together to review and evaluate different schedule options. We met last week, and we're going to be meeting again this week. It's been really valuable to hear the different voices at the table, particularly some of the students' perspectives on where we are and where they'd like to see us go. Likewise, I think it's been really helpful for everybody in the group to hear some of the constraints and restrictions involved in this process as well. Actually, this last week, just getting the opportunity to talk with more people, parents, board members, students, lots of stakeholders who are involved in this process, it's really been beneficial for everybody involved, I think. So I appreciate all the time people have taken to join us in this journey. Our goal actually is to present an accelerated model of in-person instruction in November, but with a potential start date in December. And we wanted to share too, that if a new schedule is developed and shared, our high school students will have the opportunity to re-select again for either in-person or remote instruction for the rest of the semester. We've had that question several times, so I want to make sure they know that. There, I just, I want to share that these are definitely uncharted times. We've heard of high schools where students have started in-person learning and things are going very well so far. We're also aware of many high schools across the country, and some not far away, who have opened their doors just to close them again due to outbreaks among either students or staff. We know of schools close to us who have chosen to pause their plans based on current metrics, and several who have just decided to wait until the second semester to begin. As someone mentioned at the last board meeting, there is no one size that fits all. There is only the desire to do what's best for our kids, and that's what our administrators and students, and students, staff, and parents have been working together on in the future, for the future. Any questions? We will definitely be bringing back to you some information related to our work on a new potential December start and near future.
I wasn't going to wait to ask this at the end, but since you started talking about the committee, for right now, is that just focusing on the high school, because we're looking at potentially expanding that come December? So we're just focused that committee on just high school right now, correct?
We are. Yeah, we definitely, like I said, it's been just, it's really been a, a great week to be able to talk to some people in the community and create that. So it is just based on our high school schedule at this time.
And I just want to have you address this as well, because when we looked at that committee, and you can either answer this, or Doug, or Dr. Tally, but there was no litmus test on getting on this committee. We wanted a wide range of views and opinions, because essentially, what I'm assuming in my discussions with you, Mr. Reekstra, is that we're presenting all these stakeholders with information as far as, you know, where our positives lie as a district, where our challenges lie as a district. And we're presenting them with the information to then be able to look at that in a fair way and in equal way, taking all our students into account, whether they're in-person or online, and then we're asking them to give a recommendation. Is that correct?
And to give some feedback, right. How we really started out is we looked at several different models and versions that are out there now or could potentially work in our district. We're talking about things like transportation alignment, start time. You know, our current schedule starts a little bit later. We have some students on there. Our original schedules always started earlier in the morning, so it's been really interesting, the feedback related to that. Might not have been what you might have expected at one time. And then we talked about everything from, we were real fortunate. One of the, one of the teachers who is on there is also a, no, one of the parents is also a teacher in another district in a block schedule, so he was able to weigh in on some time periods. The students have just been given a fabulous feedback as far as how they feel about some of the things going on as well.
And it's not just focusing, it's also how to make, to make online as, as good as we can make it as well, correct?
Oh, definitely. We've been talking about everything related to the learning and the schedule. Yes.
Thanks.
I have a question. How were the parents selected to be part of this committee?
Ma'am. We, we have to follow the protocol of the meeting, and I've been respectful to allow people to have their conversation. You can phone in that question, or maybe contact Ms. Reekstra after the meeting. But we need to, we, we need to conduct the meeting by protocol. So I tried to be respectful. I'm asking the audience to be respectful. So Ms. Reekstra can't answer that question later. Thank you.
Anything else? Oh, sorry.
I have a question on regarding the meeting. Did we begin this before?
Yes.
So.
Yeah, we're really hoping to, you know, it kind of depends where the meeting goes this week. So I don't want to speak for them depending on what they bring forward. We're going to share some notes from the last meeting to move the discussion along. But our goal was to by the first of November to try to come up with something. Well, we'll, we'll kind of end in that point this week already, or we may have to do another follow-up meeting after that. So hopefully, I mean, we definitely are thinking, end of the month, beginning of November, we'd like to have something ready to present. Okay. Thank you.
Regarding, regarding meetings, oh, can you hear me? You were talking about the meeting with the committee members. Once they have a decision or a recommendation that you bring, is it possible to accelerate when that's implemented? Or what would the constraints be? Like if we wanted to implement it, say, mid-November?
Soon as that, um, some of the constraints could be related to transportation that's already been set up for the other model. I mean, that's the first one that comes to my mind for that. But we had always talked about accelerating even the November model, depending how things go with that stage. But probably one of the biggest barriers could potentially be the transportation, and it also would depend on the actual model selected.
It, it, it takes a minimum of two weeks to create transportation runs. And when I say a minimum of two weeks, that's really pushing it. So that's really the big issue. As we, as, as anyone knows about school systems, transportation really runs your school system, literally and figuratively. So that is our big issue.
Okay. Anybody else?
Okay, I'm sure board members do have questions.
We've got a.
Yeah, one, I'm sorry.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rakestraw. We also have Dr. Cpiel coming up. Just, just two more slides. Sorry.
Good evening. Last but certainly not least is changes to our STEPS schedule. The STEPS program has really been in the forefront of bringing students, young adults back. And they will be in attendance one, two, three, or four days per week. That is based on the fact that some of them are still in the community with jobs. Some are still having a college experience. And so they have customized their schedule to meet their needs in the STEPS program. They, STEPS students do have pathways, and they will be working on their functional academics, community resources, employment skills, and independent living. When they are not in person Monday through Thursday, their remote learning will continue. Their current course offerings will not change. Their onsite work training experiences will increase November through January. And of late, they are planning and working with our Transportation Department to assist District 204 in the meal distribution at the high school level. So that will be an additional in-house job training site for them. And then 100% of our STEPS young adults will be using our Teach Town program. And this was, started pre-pandemic, but it has turned out to be a wonderful resource because it has point-of-view video modeling for them. It has task analysis, computer-based lessons, teacher-delivered lessons, and visual supports to teach, teach a range of critical functional skills. And it gives some great metrics on their progress. So we're very happy with the Teach Town curriculum. And then Fridays, and this is, was also pre-pandemic, but it will be a, a remote learning day for the STEPS program. It was also always their elective Friday. So it was student choice, student voice, as they like to say it. And they chose interests, career, and, and, uh, career, SEL, whatever the activity they like to do in their free time. And they had a, a staff sponsor, and they continued that in a remote fashion. But they are going to, I think, have the highest number of students coming in quite, quite soon with in-person learning.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Cpiel.
All right, thank you.
Our next steps, we will monitor our pilots and modify our schedules to best meet the needs of all learners. We will continue to monitor the effectiveness of rooming and zooming. We will continue to monitor metrics and monitor our safety protocols. I think there's no better time than now to emphasize that we have to work together as a community to reduce the current metrics that we're seeing, so that we can move forward within person learning and increasing that. We will look to increase time in our buildings for families desiring in-person learning if metrics permit. And we will enhance discussions with staff and parents to best prepare for the second semester of 2020, 2021 school year. We know that there's, you know, then, there is a natural break at the end of semester to also look at opportunities that we learn from our October-November schedules to see what opportunities present themselves to, you know, make things better. And that's what we will continue to strive to do. Throughout this, we are still keeping a focus on our portrait of a graduate, social-emotional learning and equity. Before that, I just once again want to thank the Board of Education. I want to thank our, our teaching assistants who've gone above and beyond to help us as we've brought students into the building, especially our pilot schools and all the efforts they've put in. Our secretaries who've done so much work in making sure that students were able to get the transportation if it needed and understand all the different things that are going on to be successful at school. I want to thank our teachers who continue with all their efforts to do best for students, whether it's in-person or remotely, as well as our dean's assistants, our custodians, who are going above and beyond to clean when we've had situations where we've had to deep clean or disinfect because we've been notifying that someone has tested positive for COVID so that we can continue using our facilities. And I want to thank our administrators who've been, you know, involved in trying to make everything work in their buildings, from laying out directional paths to signage to figuring out schedules and everything that goes in that. And as well as our parents who have been patient with us in trying to support their students, both students who are coming to school as well as the students at home. So there's a lot to be appreciative of during this time. Hoping I didn't leave out anybody. And with that, we're all available for questions.
Thank you. I'm sure each one of us has questions to ask. So I'm just going to ask different board members to ask the question. So I'll begin with Ms. Grover.
So I like the room, rooming and zooming because I know one of the concerns both in-person parents and remote parents had that they wanted more live instruction. Are we able to provide the teachers with training for that? And do we have the equipment needed to be able to do rooming and zooming?
There are definitely some, you know, technology items or devices that we've need. We recently ordered a thousand microphones slash speakers to put in our classrooms to help with both, for our teachers to hear students who might be at home, as well as our students hear the teacher from home a little bit better, depending on where they're in in the classroom, and give them a little bit more mobility. We've looked at some other items as teachers are experimenting with things. Some of those might relate to needing additional cords, to asking if there's additional monitors or different things to be successful. We're looking at all of those things and trying to see what we can do. We've done a lot of work with, you know, remote learning professional development. It does take on a little bit different when you're trying to do both at the same time. It might be, you know, reminding yourself to check in at the computer because a lot of times you can, you know, get into a conversation and those types of things. So it, it's going to take time. It's a lot to ask. But we are continuing to work on, you know, professional learning opportunities, giving guidance documents on different ways. We're trying to, once we learn about certain things, we try to share that with other people across the district so they can start seeing how would this work if I was using it. So there's a lot that goes into it, and we're doing our best in trying to provide either guidance or professional learning associated with it.
The other question I have, I noticed with the middle schoolers, they were coming Tuesday, they were back-to-back, Tuesday, Wednesday, whereas elementary school was divided. Is, is there a reason why the schedules aren't in sync?
So we had first come up with the elementary pilot schedule, and we were looking at, especially with our younger learners, you know, seeing them at two different times during the week at least. And we weren't really looking at, at it back-to-back that way. But when we look at our middle school and our high school schedules where we're in a block schedule, which you're seeing some school districts who started in remote as well, weren't in a block schedule. But in a, when you're trying to bring students in-person, that block schedule helps quite a bit because it limits your amount of transitions. If you remember from the metrics guidance, you know, you do want to try to limit those transitions and stuff. So that's why, since half of the periods are on one day and half on the other day, that's why we have the two days back-to-back. We are aware of some concerns from parents who might have students on Tuesday and Thursday, and some with Tuesday and Wednesday. And we will try to work with families on how can we support them, or is there something a little bit different we can do with schedules to support that situation? At the elementary, we really looked at trying, when we knew which students were going to be able to come in, we also tried to look at how can we group students with learning needs and supports because we knew we had other things in the schedules we had to match up with that. And so that did, you know, take some priority in that scheduling as well. But it is something we're aware of right now and something we want to work through.
My last question actually is with finances. The thing is, transportation is a huge issue. I know some parents are thinking, well, what if I just bus my, what if I just transport my child? Would that help? Can, can my child then come more days?
It can. Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead. It can.
Well, it, it, it can help. It, like, you would have to have enough students to completely reduce an entire route. So, and that could even be the timing of a route. We have some, as, as you know, boundaries have been a big topic in our district. And we have some students traveling a little bit farther to get to a school and stuff. So it would depend, if you still have to pick up at least one student who's, you know, a half hour from the building, as well as some students who are within 15, it, it all depends on how you can route that. If you had enough to reduce the number of routes, then that could make a difference in how, how we could add more transportation. If, if what you're asking, I think the question is about, you know, can we transport some students in the morning and some in the afternoon? And that comes with an expensive price tag. It would all depend on how many routes you would be able to reduce. I, I, Dr. Tally probably has a little bit better to add on that. I'm, I'm, I'm not in the transportation field. I try to know as much as I can, but.
No, you, you were right on target. You said almost everything I would say. The cost of doing a double run is about $4 million for us. And even, as you mentioned, even if we had a reduction, some parents wanted to bring their children in, we'd have to have a reduction across the whole district because some routes would then start being longer, which impact our bus runs for the middle or high school or, or elementary school. And so it is a, it's a process. And so it, it really is something that would have to happen across the whole district in reducing the route. So it's not something that, it could be done easily.
There are some districts who own their own buses, and that makes that process a little bit easier for them. We also have to match it with all of our different start times. So if middle school's starting and ending at this time, we have to look at when can we start elementary and N-Elementary, as well as high school. So we have all these ones we have to juggle because we typically, as most people in the community know, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll go to high school, pick up the students, drop them off, off to the middle school, pick up students, and drop them off, off to the elementary in our routes and get that done. And that saves the district quite a bit of money through our service when, when we do it that way. I hope that helps.
Thanks, Mrs. Grover. Ms. Donahue?
I have a couple of questions. I went to the IPPC meeting. I really liked some of the questions that were asked there and the comments. I thought a larger audience would benefit from hearing them. So one of them was about if our elementary classrooms can fit 12 to 13 children while maintaining the six-foot separation, and a class has less than that maximum sign up for hybrid, can they attend half-day every day?
So, um, you know, we have 21 elementaries across our district, and we have tried to approach this from an equity standpoint to see, you know, we would struggle to say, okay, if you go to this school, you only get to come twice a week. But if you go to this school, you get to come four or five times a week because of how many people chose, you know, in-person learning. So for instance, at, you know, you saw two schools up there. I think like Springbrook was one of them. It might have been at 61%. And then you saw another school at 28%. Well, the 28% we could probably bring in students every day, you know, the in-person ones in the morning, and then maybe teach to the remote ones in the afternoon depending. But then at Springbrook, we wouldn't be able to do that. So we have found some situations like that that would be a, a struggle as we try to have equity across the district. I do think we would look at opportunities. Right now, we're studying all of our numbers and exactly what numbers are there and how many we can fit in that classroom. And we are looking even at grade levels. Could we take one grade level where it's across the entire district and see, can we bring that entire grade level in every day in the morning because of where our numbers are at, and then teach the remote learners in the afternoon? So those are some things we're looking at right now. But, you know, honestly, it has been from an equity lens of why we, we, we haven't tried to treat it differently from school to school.
Yeah, because even within like a school, a grade level could have vastly different number of children signing up for hybrid. Like one first grade class has four kids signed up for hybrid, and the other one has, you know, 13. So what do you do?
Right. So that's where, you know, we're, we're definitely, in the pilot, we're seeing that a little bit already. And we're looking at what can we do that maybe we can implement broader when we bring more students in, to see how do we handle those situations? Can we do something with co-teaching? Can we look at, are there other staff members that can be involved in the instructional process for in-person so we can spread it across to get more students in more days of a week and stuff like that? So we are looking at those right now to see how do we manage that? Because at the same time, you're also looking at when it's not an in-person day, how many students do you have on Zoom that you're trying to meet the needs of? And you want to make sure that you're, as we said, trying to improve the learning experiences for them as well. So does that give us an opportunity to try some different things, or have that teacher try to room and zoom and invite some more students in to see if we can do that at that time, or split the morning and AM even virtually to get smaller numbers of students? So there's many different things that we're going to try in some of those situations where we're seeing that.
Okay. The current elementary and middle school schedules are challenging for our families, especially those with daycare needs. Some families who wanted in-school did not choose hybrid because of the limited in-school time, the change in routine, or the difficulties with logistics around getting their child there and back. Do we expect to see future changes if the current choices go well? And if so, in what timeframe?
I think there are, as we said, we're going to be looking at all different opportunities. One of the big concerns, and as you know, when we presented the elementary pilot, was changing students and their teachers was both a concern coming from many parents as well as teachers. And, but it could help us solve some other situations possibly in workload, right? If you have a teacher that for maybe medical reasons needs to teach from home, is there a way to switch and have the remote learners assigned to that teacher and your in-person ones assigned to the in-person teaching? Those are all things that we're going to have to look at through while we're doing these schedules. But we did, in at least the short term, try to do this with the least disruption from teacher-student. So I think as we look at some of those natural time periods to do that, possibly like a second semester, those might be things that we consider at that time. We want to involve teachers in that discussion. We want to involve our, our, our parents and get their feedback, especially during this pilot, as well as our administrators in, in the buildings to see what does this look like? What would it take to do some of that switching? Because I do think all of a sudden you, you see some other logistical things that happen. But those are all things that we, we need to find out as we move into this. We have heard from parents who said if their teacher's going to have to teach from home, they didn't want to come in person, and vice versa. We've heard from parents who said, if my teacher's remote, is there a way for me to have a, a different teacher during that time? So we're hearing both of those right now from parents.
Okay, I did, I did write up some comments because of all of the volume of email and other things that keep coming up. I just wanted to say a few things. So first of all, many thanks to the administration and staff for all their efforts in support of the district plans. We received 6,075 comments and 412 pages of comments from our teachers in this recent survey. There were a lot of thoughts there. And thanks to all of the constructive comments coming from our community. We get a lot of email from our, our parents, too. Our board does spend time reading this important input, which represents both ends of perspective. The approximate 50/50 split between the parents and teachers wanting to be in the building and the other half desiring to stay home creates a challenging situation. Everyone has worked diligently to build our remote learning environment. Thanks to our teachers who tirelessly transform their trans, traditional teaching methods and will continue to do some in moving to hybrid. They carry a heavy workload, and this is a concern. It is highly likely that in the future, we will face situations requiring classes or schools to quickly transition to 100% remote. We are prepared. I am happy we are moving to bringing more of our students into the buildings and growing our high school option. To protect our staff and students, I support the Health Department guidance of six feet of separation. We need to avoid changing teachers, not degrade the remote experience, and must be consistent across our schools. We need to meet our budget. I don't offer these as excuses, but as constraints to our plans. Our administration and staff have made this an A-plus district. This has required creativity and passion. The state of Illinois assigns a financial tier level to all districts based on their combined local taxes, their state and federal funding on a scale of one to four, with tier four being the best. Our district is funded at 80% adequacy. We are tier two, not the worst, but the penultimate category. A tier four District 203 is in the best category. There is a 37% difference in funding available to support our students between District 203 and 204. Our budget is a constraint to our plans. The district and administration and staff have faced significant challenges, yet prevailed to create an aspirational district. It is not possible to make everyone happy, and I recognize we are not going as fast as some people would like. I ask for your continued patience, flexibility, and belief that your children are in the hands of an administration, staff, superintendent, and school board who care deeply about helping your children achieve their best and who will do everything in our power to make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rising?
Just a couple of quick questions, and I'll read my public comments, although I'm not a public comment because I'm an elected official. So do you, you know, our last survey of parents, you know, which was a while ago.
Our what? I, I apologize.
Our, our last survey of parents, we were at about 55% wanting in-person, 45% wanting online. And the numbers came back a little different that I'm sure we maybe anticipated, but not necessarily were that surprised. But, you know, I know that the default, so if people didn't register or didn't go online to parent view, it would default to online learning, which I'm fine with because that's the safe choice. And if they realize that after the fact, I'm sure they could always call their school and change that. But do you think some of that was due to maybe the high school level where they weren't, you know, there, there was going around, you know, for so long, which, which is the current model as far as, you know, at a high school, it's going to be one day a month until we can expand potentially? Do you think that just made people say, well, I'll just stay online then? I mean, I'm just, I, I don't, I don't expect you to have a crystal ball. I'm just.
Yeah. I, I, I wouldn't know exactly why, but I do hear things. So I'll start there. First of all, the question on the survey would be, was, would you feel comfortable sending your child in with appropriate safety protocols? It doesn't necessarily mean, will you be sending your child in? I've heard many different things from, there wasn't enough time, is it worth it to send them in? I've heard, you know, I didn't know about the deadline, which we've tried to adjust on that. But you said one of things about if you didn't do it, that the safe choice was remote. It, it was based on safety protocols. We've been saying since, well, I, I think since June, we need numbers. We need to know the numbers. And so that was the, one of the big reasons that we said, if you're not selecting it, you're going to be remote because we need to know exactly what numbers we're dealing with. The schedules at both the middle school and high school in trying to balance that, you can imagine that a student goes from, you know, period one to period two. And if you do an alpha split, it doesn't mean that you have exactly 13 kids starting in this class that were A through L, and exactly 13 that were M through Z, and that in the second period class, it's exactly the same. You know, so we knew, we needed numbers to see exactly what this was going to look like. Like, we might have 12 in this one, but we have 15 in-person for second period just because of how it breaks out, especially at the middle school when you start looking into advanced placement classes or some of your encore selected courses. And then high school, as we know, we have over 200 courses, trying to make sure that everything balanced, that we can fit all the students in the classroom on the days. We know there's going to be a little maneuvering because if we do see, okay, we have 15 that should be on an A day, and eight on a B day, we've got to figure out, how can we do that and not mess up the rest of the schedule? So there's a lot of work. You talked about how much lead time do you need? I think that plays a lot into it, too. How are we going to balance those schedules to make sure that we're ensuring that our safety protocols are in place? We did, you know, there could be things related to childcare. There could be other things that play into why people might have cho, not chosen that, or. Or, as you've seen, the metrics have only crept up, which I think could also play into people going, well, maybe now's not the time.
Yeah, or.
We have tried to emphasize that it was second quarter. As Mrs. Rakestrad said, as we've worked on the high school model, we might also resurvey at that time because we don't want parents who might have not selected because of, you know, of certain circumstances at that time so that they have that opportunity. It's, we have had some people reach out even today though, who selected hybrid and asked to move to remote because of, you know, announcements that have come out. So it's harder for us to be flexible about moving people to in-person because of the numbers than it is to move people to remote.
So, and just another quick question too. And I'm sorry if I catch you off guard here, maybe we can pull up Laura too. I'm assuming PA at the middle school level will kind of maintain just like we saw there. I mean, it's going to be relatively similar because a lot of those PA kids at middle school are kind of in a separate. How is that going to work at the elementary level? I mean, I don't know if, and you can always get back to me on it too if.
Mrs. Rosenbloom is right here.
Oh.
Did you hear my question?
There you are. Yes, I was fortunately able to hear your question. So yes, we are maintaining, we call it that guided block, which includes intervention and enrichment.
Okay.
We are going to continue that. So just like students are receiving services now, they will continue to receive services. But that is one of the reasons that we said, like, that was just a sample schedule because where we're able to stagger that so that our PA teachers are available for that block throughout the day might vary.
Okay, thanks.
Sure thing.
Then I'll just, so I'll just kind of address how I wanted, what I wanted to say tonight. So there's been a lot of stuff since our last board meeting, in-parent groups, social media. The Board of Education is tasked with, and our mission says, inspire all students to achieve their greatest potential. I think our public kind of knows that by now. We've kind of beat that. This has always been our mission, and everybody aligns to this mission, whether it's the board, the superintendent, the administrators, the teachers, support staff, even janitors and bus drivers. Given the pandemic, everyone is doing their best job to make this happen. For anyone to question the mission and those people mentioned trying to accomplish this mission, to make sure that our students achieve academically, socially, and emotionally, regardless of your position on this pandemic, is frankly disappointing and insulting that you should question our, us trying to accomplish this. This board, superintendent, administration, in conjunction with our staff, has consistently worked to try and meet the needs of all our students, whether they're in-person or online. Is it the way some envisioned instruction would look like or to inspire? Probably not. Is it as fast-moving or cautiously-moving as others want? Probably not. We aren't like other districts, and we do have to follow safety protocols. What 204 won't do is create a plan that is rushed or not well-thought-out. What you see before you tonight is a plan that is months in the making, has included hundreds of people, and moves us forward and allows us to get students and staff, staff back safely while ensuring mandated online learning is in place for those that choose that option. As allowable, we hope to increase this plan, but only safely as it works for 204. The, what we know and what the science tells us is as long as mask-wearing, social distancing, and hand washing and sanitizing is in place, schools are incredibly safe environments to be in. While some of this is in the district's hands, much of this relies on local numbers and parents and students being diligent when students and staff are not physically in the school buildings. As the positivity numbers rise in our state or our region, the likely of students being in-person learning also declines. So this depends on all of us. The one thing I'm reassured by, again, that if these safety protocols are followed, schools are incredibly safe places, and there has been little to no data of spread of COVID inside school buildings. Bottom line is, we all need to pull together as a community and support each other and keep our positivity numbers down. We all need to support each other and advocate for each other. If your student is staying online, be positive about those choosing in-person and wish them well and that they can get back and hopefully in-person instruction can expand. If you choose in-person instruction for your student, advocate for those online instruction students that they continue to be engaged and the, and the online instruction is rigorous. I see social media, and we all need to pull together as a community and stop the division. This is not going to be a perfect solution for any of us. This is what none of us want. Everyone is struggling in different ways. And your judgment, regardless of how you feel, doesn't help our community. What we all have in common is that not many of us want things to be this way. However, what we can all do is support each other, advocate for all students, and be kind to each other. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Rising. Ms. Demming?
And I'm excited to hear so much for the patient and for providing feedback to both those who have agreed with the staff and the administration board of the board, and all of those who have feedback to the district. But especially those who have said that there are many who would not agree, that who have practiced by and stayed with the program and have been patient and institutionalized of our best and best practices, all of us who have different divisions everywhere. And I need to add something to the question. Would the parent, what, what's the point of communication and working with the technology providers that are helping to provide access and all of those things that are literally part of the technology?
Yeah, obviously, in the remote learning environment, technology is a challenge. I think it's a challenge for all districts. Are we going to have, you know, connectivity? When I was at one of our buildings that was a pilot school on Friday, we noticed that things were not going well. And I need immediately, we send a message to tech services. They looked into it, and the reason they weren't seeing much of it is because we, because of the size of our district, we have multiple providers to make sure that we stay connected. And actually, one of our providers that I, don't quote me exactly, but helps with 40% of our connectivity was down. So it was only affecting certain parts of a district. And so they quickly had to actually deactivate that one. And so we had to shift all to our other provider at that time, which immediately helped in the building that I was at and another building that I know was experiencing issues. I don't know what it did for the people who already had good connectivity. If it, you know, I mean, it's all, you know, bandwidth and what that looked like, but I didn't hear concerns that way. So there's an ongoing communication. As you know, we've had concerns with Zoom. We've had concerns with synergy just at times. And how can we prevent Zoom bombing? Or what can we do with synergy for connectivity and those types of things? And I know that both Dr. Tally and Adam Smits have been involved in trying to work with them on, and kind of demanding a certain level of service that needs to be provided. Those concerns aren't going to move away when we try to room and zoom. I mean, we're going to have to be even more creative on things. And now all of a sudden, you're going to have, you know, if you're trying to have students, you know, stream into the classroom from outside, we're trying to work on what are best practices to be as successful as possible for the students who are in the room. Some people might think, are they on Zoom too so they can see the other students? And that probably is not going to be a good practice to have in place because we want to try to reduce the amount of streaming that might be going on at that time so we have as much connectivity as possible coming from the outside. So there's a lot of communication, trying to work with both our, you know, internet service providers as well as the companies, the vendors that we work with for many of our technology applications. I hope I answered. Is that what you were?
Yeah, I mean, I want to say that if you want to talk with him and you need to, I just know what I think. Aurora has a conversation, and I'm going to sort of, if you can call us ahead. And I just want to know if you should, if anything, we love and appreciate the support and care and the community, especially regarding the decision that previously the initiative shared regarding the final school, current school plan. So I just really appreciate that we have been listening to the community and support those that would like to be improved, that we want to update in terms of school and kind of that fellow version of that is in place. Thank you for including the parents and students who stand out. Can you share a little bit what it would look like, you know, on the community and community care that we have and already spread across all the communities that I have.
On the committee?
Yeah.
Okay. Ms. Rakestrad?
Repeat the question because I know online, it's kind of hard to hear Susan's mic.
Okay. Do you want me to repeat? Can you hear me? Yeah. No, that's okay. Yeah.
No, it's not your fault, Susan. It's, I think it's a mic issue.
Susan, yeah, no. Yeah, in asking about the number who are on the committee. So each of the schools have two or three students, two to three staff members. And I think the staff members are particularly the senators in their building. So they're affiliated with the union and have some experience in kind of working with groups that way. And then parents, two to three, and the principals in looking at those groups really tried to look at diversity. They were actually asking each other, do you have a parent coming from Aurora? Or is that parent going to have a Naperville address and things like that? So they really did try to work on having some diversity in the group. And Susan, I want to thank to all the people who have, you know, to be honest, it's been a very tough week, tough couple of weeks for the principals and for some of the leaders. But I think out of tough times, you really grow. And it's just, it's really turned into a really good experience for us to open the doors and to talk and communicate more with people and to expand the group that are working on or move forward. So it's really turned out to be a positive thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My last question revolves, revolves around the elementary school plan. Is there, were the discussions or hot processes or will potentially not have the remote learners just have access to teachers all the way to the avenue? Can you share a little bit, I meant one that is very difficult to.
Yeah, I think, you know, obviously, there's things we're trying. As you heard, there might be some things where we try, you know, to, to room and zoom at the same time. That could help in that situation. I think there are some things developmentally as well. You know, a high schooler zooming in and watching the teacher instruct or watching the experiment and being able to, you know, ask their questions or know the exact way to do that. I think it's going to be very different than asking a kindergartner to do the same thing or a first grader or a second grader. So in, in what we've scheduled, we really wanted, okay, so, I mean, a huge benefit of this is, you know, I was in the buildings on Thursday and Friday and seeing a teacher in there with, you know, seven students or six students and what they're able to do with small groups of students, especially at K1, 2. And then in the afternoon, having, you know, the number of students on the screen less than, you know, having the 25 max is always huge as well to, to see all the students at the same time and have smaller groups then. So we will explore opportunities. We think there's a little bit more possibility at third through fifth grade to do that. Or like we said, I mean, I mean, something that can be considered later on. But I, I, I say it cautiously is, you know, if we do some, trying to find out if we change some teachers to have more, you know, we talked about this when we were originally thinking about hybrid in the summer, about do you have hybrid, I mean, like, remote learning teachers? Obviously, we ran into quite a few problems when we looked at that at the high school. So if this is a solution for high school and middle school, that helps quite a bit. And then we have to figure out, I mean, through what we try, how effective is that instruction for our elementary students? I think we see some possibilities at third through fifth grade, but I do see some concerns with obviously pre-K through second grade.
Thank you. And I just want to, want to comment. Thank you so much for the, for seeing the good team and giving us information and sharing the information with us and your, 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 your.
Thank you. Ms. Peel?
Yeah, I'd like to get a little clarification on the middle school plan. I'm trying to understand the zooming and the rooming thing. Is it for every single period?
Yeah, so what, okay, so what you might envision is like first period, you might have 12 students in the classroom if you had the capacity. So, you know, it could be 10, could be eight. It all depends on the numbers coming in. And those are the A-day students. So your B students who are not there on that day, as well as your remote learners, would zoom into the classroom is what we are looking at. The reason for that, of why you would also include your B is because you want a continuation of curriculum and lessons. So the next time you have that period, if B is in-person, you're wanting to move to that next lesson. And you can imagine, if you didn't have B on there, when would you be teaching B those lessons? Would you wait until they come in, but then you'd get through even less curriculum if you did it that way? Mr. Hillman, do you have anything to add to that, or did I?
No, that, that did clarify it for me. You know, I'm just going to say, I think we've gone around the room and explained we have these parameters that some of them are community-driven and some of them are education system-driven. Transportation is one. Equity is another. Safety is our number one, and so we have to follow those protocols. If we are not following those protocols, our teachers are not comfortable coming into the building, and they are the ones who are most susceptible to COVID. So we have to follow those protocols. Our parents want their kids to have the same teacher. We don't want to switch around teachers, and we understand that's normally best practice. So we don't want to change that. So I, I see all these parts, like a puzzle, that you're trying to put together. And if you move one, you're moving something else. So that's what we're dealing with. And I think getting that picture to the community of how complicated and complex this is every time we make another change is important for people to understand. The zooming and the rooming is something I'm sitting here going, when we roll out a technology plan for our staff, tying it to curriculum, we spend about two years preparing and planning and making sure this is going to improve learning or we wouldn't bother with it. And we are, I think the term is, we're building the airplane while we're flying it. And this, that's a big part of that airplane right now if we're using it as much as we're thinking we're using it for our middle schools and our high schools. And the connectivity is a big, big issue. I don't know, I don't know exactly if we have the capacity to really handle that, especially for every period at the middle school level.
Thank you for bringing that up too, Ms. Peel. You know, we obviously didn't expect. You know, we obviously didn't expect to be in a pandemic. So when March hit, that was a challenge. And I think, you know, we focused on social, emotional and connecting and, and relationships. And there was a lot of after the fact, some, you know, dissatisfaction with how, you know, remote learning looked. And then, you know, in the beginning of the summer, we, you know, had communicated that we were trying to look at hybrid models and we're trying to focus on remote learning and training for our teachers. And I, I've no longer heard concerns of remote learning looking like what it did in the spring because our teachers have, you know, they go full go, they learn, they do that. And you're right, here we are, we're asking them to learn something completely different. Professional learning was asked about and what that's going to look like. And I know there's concern about, you know, learning on the fly again. How do I make this work? Am I going to have the supports in place? I think that also plays into the survey results that we saw about, you know, concerns for in-person learning. And you're right. I mean, I'm sure our staff are already thinking, what if I'm in with person and the students at home don't have connectivity or something's not working or, you know, Comcast went out. How are those students going to get the lesson? Those are things that we're going to have to work through and try to, we're going to need patience and support and just as many have been providing during this time. So I, I hear exactly what you're saying and we do continue to ask people to change and, and it's a very difficult time with everything else going on to do that. So I appreciate you bringing that up.
I had one other, I'd asked this too, and this relates to our community supporting our, our going back to school. And I asked you, what are the symptoms we're checking? We self-check. You know, I was thinking, is it a headache? Is it a fever? But today, I think Jay said it was a runny nose and congestion. And those were the ones that were turning out to have positive COVID test. And I think most of us always go to work and go to school with a runny nose and some congestion because we think it's an allergy. So we're going to have to be very diligent about the symptoms that we send to school and we bring to school if we want to really have in-person learning again. So I, I thank all the staff. I thank the administrators. This is the most, I, I can't think of how many challenges we're all facing all at the same exact time. And our learning of our students are, is utmost important. The social, emotional status of every single student is important to us. We do have resources for our social, emotional needs of our students and I hope that parents will realize that they can reach out to their schools to get help for their kids if they're feeling that they are really being challenged. And thank you guys all for so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carubus.
I guess that's me now, sorry.
I'm sorry.
With all the remote presentations, I was. I'm used to next slide, please. All right. Sorry about that.
I'm just offering some perspective. No, yeah, that one. Offering some perspective. This is the guidance offered by the DuPage Public Health Department. And it's based upon community transmission. It's not based upon the transmission of the virus within the schools. And the Du, and the health department considers mental health issues, behavioral health issues, drug abuse issues. There are local experts and they, this is what they're telling us. And as of today, we've moved to substantial community transmission. And our local public health department that considers behavioral health issues, crisis services, teen health is recommending that schools encourage, is encouraging schools to move to 100% remote learning. And is also saying that school officials should use their discretion and expertise to determine which populations of students should receive in-person instruction whose needs are less likely to be met by, by virtual instruction. So we are considering the social, emotional needs by relying upon our local public health department that collects data in our community and is making these policy recommendations. There is discretion for us to, to ignore them, follow them, or something in between. But once again, as a point of perspective, and as a speaker mentioned, the governor relied, asked, acknowledged that ultimate decisions on school boards and on whether districts remain open or closed right now is based upon the recommendation of local school boards. And we are seven volunteers. Yes, we're elected, but we're volunteers. We have parent, we are parents, some of us. We have students in the district. So we intimately understand what is happening in our schools, to our kids, to our neighbors. We all live in the community. None of us signed up for the pandemic shift here, whether you're up here in the audience, sitting remotely, but we're all learning to deal with it and there's no playbook on this and we're doing the best we can. So I encourage all of us to come together. You know, I'm not happy with the plan and none of us should be, but we, we all want to make it better and there's a lot of ways to, to improve upon it. I heard a lot of, of talking about opportunities and we see those. We are trying to open up deliberately, intentionally, in a way that is within our guidance, our bumpers that are given to us. So I applaud the administration on the work they're doing. I thank my fellow board members and I look forward to getting to 100% in-person instruction when we are able to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a few statements. As I guess most of us said, the goal is to return to school. From my perspective, we do need to do that with the guidelines that are presented to us. I heard several board members say, we appreciate the feedback that was given to us from the community and from the teachers. And I need to say, as board spokesperson, I get to answer most of those. And I need to tell you that the large, large majority of those letters, some of them expressing support of the plan, some of them expressing frustration, were done, it was done in a respectful way. I want to kind of characterize what was in that correspondence, just in case some people were watching and didn't write us. But some of the challenges that were presented to the board and the administration by our community include both remote and in-school, school community members are requesting that instruction be provided as much as possible to their child. Clearly, if it was my student and I had a preference, I would be advocating for that. Parents are requesting that their teacher who is now remote, because we're in remote instruction, remain the same. Our high school parents are requesting that all current classes, and we have over 250 to 300 classes, be offered in both a remote and in an in-school fashion. As we heard, and it was alluded to before, technology is being tested to ascertain if simultaneous instruction can be provided. Some parents from both the in-school group and remote group have expressed concern that their children will be shortchanged if this occurs. Teachers are asking us to make sure that our schools are safe, that we follow guidelines and protocols. And since they're learning new methods of instruction, they're asking that we assist them in the best way possible. They're challenges. They're not excuses. A very small segment, to be honest, sometimes uses the terminology, and it's a small segment, of we versus them. And a phrase that often accompanies the we versus them is do not cave. And I get it. But the only way we're going to do this is if we have an us mentality. I think it's important that we do this together. And together, I mean the administration, the board, parents, bill, continue to respectfully provide us feedback because clearly in a very short time, you influence decision-making. We need to continue to search for answers, provide quality equitable education to all our children, both groups, however you want to mention it. My last statement is, I think we've been vigilant and I think we've been deliberate. Critics could say we're slow and I get it. But one thing that I heard and sticks with me is sustainability. We're going to read the newspaper tomorrow and we're going to see many districts going back and forth. They already have in many different districts. And perhaps that's going to be necessary due to the guidelines. But the more we can do this in a right fashion, in a good fashion, we can maintain sustainability, that we can do it over time. And that's my goal and that's my hope that we do it right. So any other discussion? Okay, with that, we'll move on.
Just, those of you who know me, I'm, I'll, I'll feel bad if I don't mention other people I might have left off earlier, but I just want to say when I'm thanking staff across the district, you know, by teachers, that includes LMC directors and student service coordinators and our reading specialists, our interventionists, our deans, our SLPs, our PTs, our psychs. I just want to say that because just last week, when we were bringing people in person and seeing all the different roles, our nurses, what they do to make sure that people stay safe and have what they need and are still compassionate with our students, our bus drivers have been incredible. We didn't have a single student late with transportation in such a, you know, doing something completely different. So I want to thank them. Where I was at, it was amazing. We were piloting two grade levels, but we had a PA teacher, the LMC director, SLP and OT all there to just try and help and make sure that it went as smooth as possible. So it's a 100% group effort and I just want to make sure that people know that we appreciate that. So thank you.
Thank you. We now move to our action items. I need a motion to approve the equity belief statement as presented.
I can't hear. I'll make a motion to approve the equity belief statement as presented.
A second?
There's a second. Susan?
I have a question.
Yes, any discussion?
I have a, I have a board request about what is happening, while we're having discussions and I think the community input that we've had, if you're appreciative, if they take the board to review our board's, and I can call it, so I think we have a question, the senator, the board, so we can do that.
Other discussion? I'm going to read it. The district, well, sorry. The District 204 Board of Education recognizes that in order to inspire all students to achieve their greatest potential, we must lead and engage in a collective commitment to equity. The board recognizes that with our objective to provide educational opportunities that result in equitable outcomes, we must work proactively to address biases and eliminate structures and practices that negatively affect student learning and achievement. We pledge to foster educational equity for all students by actively identifying and removing any barriers by ensuring that all policies, practice, programs, and procedures support and affirm each student. We are committed to creating a culture where all staff, students, and families feel safe, welcome, respected, and part of the school community. We recognize that equity work is ongoing and pledge to engage the entire 204 community, actively including students, families, educators, and all stakeholders in our equity journey. This will be an accountable, measured, and continuous examination of our educational system. By eliminating disparities in educational opportunities and embracing our diversity, we can best assure that our students have the greatest potential to succeed academically, socially, and emotionally. Any other comments before we vote? Hearing none, Jeannie, call the roll.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Ms. Roger?
Ms. Carubus?
Yes, yes.
Ms. Right?
Yeah, yes.
I think the, I think after nine. It passed eight zero. Motion passes. Our next action item is the approval of the representative to the delegate assembly to the Illinois Association of School Boards. Each year, the Illinois Association of School Boards puts forth resolutions that school boards consider. School boards are required to appoint a representative to that delegate assembly. Mr. Rising, over the course of, I think, the last seven years I've been on the board, has been that delegate. Not that I'm trying to stuff the ballot box there, but do I have a...
I want to, I want to, I want to, uh, be a delegate to the assembly.
I'll second.
I have a motion and second.
Oh, I'm not sure if that...
Ms. Grover?
Ms. Rehak?
Aye.
Ms. Rehak?
I should abstain, but I guess I'll say yes.
Motion passes.
I never said aye, but, okay.
I said yeah.
Ms. Peale?
Aye.
Thank you. I apologize. Motion passes. We now go to further discussion. First topic is the elementary social studies curriculum.
Great, thank you, Board of Education. Tonight, we just wanted to update you on where we're at with elementary social studies curriculum. We are not presenting anything about a curriculum proposal tonight. It's just to give you an update. And with me this evening is Joan Peterson. She's our Director for Elementary Curriculum Instruction. And for most of this, I'll probably be up here just clicking away, and she'll do the presenting. She's the expert. So, with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over.
Thanks, Doug. Good evening, Board members, Dr. Tally, colleagues, and community members. Thank you for the opportunity this eve, this evening to share some of the recent work we've been doing with the Elementary Social Studies Committee. Next slide, Doug. The purpose this evening is for us, as we move in a direction toward Board Policy 640, we'd like to take some time tonight to share our continued work on the curriculum drafting and development for elementary social studies, share with you about our pilot work thus far and an expansion to that pilot, and then also share our proposed next steps for our work as a committee moving towards curriculum proposal. While Doug and I, well, Mr. Carrius and I are the two standing on this stage, we would, if times were different, of course, like to have the names of all of these elementary staff members on this next slide, because from the inception of this committee, we have had 25 very committed elementary staff members as a part of the work that we'll be sharing with you this evening, as well as some instructional specialists from the Curriculum and Instruction Department. At the inception of our committee work, we began with approximately one staff member from every elementary school across the district to, for a total of approximately 25 members of that team. This initial group has spent time working in collaboration with their grade-level colleagues, so kindergarten teachers collaborating with the other kindergarten teachers on the team, as well as cross-grade level articulation, where they were talking with one another from a K-5 perspective as committee members. Of course, all of this work was done alongside our instructional specialists with a lens on both ELA, social studies, and even incorporating math and science when appropriate. The work with the, with the adoption of the state social science standards came some critical changes for instruction, K-12 across the board. And several years into the work of those social science standards, they're actually perfectly aligned with our portrait of a graduate mindset. The standards for social sciences in the state of Illinois are within the C-3 framework, which speaks specifically to having students be prepared for college, career, and civics. Again, very like-minded to the work that we are doing in the district with our end goal for all of our graduates from their K-12 experience. Within the C-3 framework, it does guide learning opportunities for students to engage in inquiry, argument, and actionable experiences. The five shifts, the five shifts on the next slide, thank you, Mr. Carrius, are at the heart of the curriculum design and instruction practices for social studies instruction, kindergarten through 12th grade. These are focused particularly on questioning, how can we teach students question formation strategies so that they can inquire of their own accord beyond the questions that we provide them? Regular and consistent opportunities for collaboration among students and communication in an ongoing fashion with one another, as well as with their teacher. Content incorporation, including not just the pieces that are a part of the themes within the social studies, but also mandated legislation content as well. Literacy integration, in fact, actually, much of our K-5 social studies, as it stands currently, is already interwoven into our English Language Arts curriculum. And then finally, taking an opportunity for informed action, this fifth instructional shift is one that is an exciting, newer opportunity for us to really put an increased emphasis on for our students, K-12. The, thus far, the committee, that committee of 25, we began by unpacking the standards, the state standards, and we explored the instructional shifts referenced, those key instructional shifts referenced on the previous slide. We spent time, after unpacking the standards and getting to know what the state included in those standards and understanding the instructional shifts, that group of 25 has spent the last year drafting essential questions, compelling questions, and supporting questions that match the grade-level themes designated by the state. The state themes include, for kindergarten, my social world; for first grade, living, learning, and working together; for second grade, families and neighborhoods and communities; third grade, communities near and far; fourth grade, our state and our nation; and fifth grade, our nation and our world. So, as we have worked to draft some initial compelling questions for the curriculum, the sequence from K-5 goes from kindergartners thinking, "This is my world," up through fifth grade in a, in a logical sequence, to "This is our world" by the time we get to the point where we are looking at our nation and our world. What we see on this slide, again, this is a draft, but this is a sample of one of the third-grade examples that the committee has worked on as a draft. Again, this is the committee of 25 initial members, and we worked to draft questions that address both civics, history, economics, and geography at every grade level. And as we wrote these questions, there were some key things that we kept in mind with every question that we authored. The first is, do they provoke independent thinking, critical thinking skills which our kids will cultivate over time? Do they generate interest? Will the kid, will the students care about what we're studying? Do they, can they not be answered easily? Are they rigorous? Do they, do they require something more than a yes or, yes or no, memorization of facts, or multiple choice? Do they spark inquiry? Will students be driven to try to find answers for themselves? Do they allow for disciplinary content, including mandated content? And overarching, we always consider within our questions, an equity lens, asking ourselves, do these questions as written provide for multiple perspectives? Do they allow for diverse student ownership over making a claim, collecting evidence, and then providing some reasoning? So, this group of 25 participated in professional learning. We began with Shonda Ronan, who actually was a state participant in authoring the standards. She came and provided training to that first group of 25 in the committee and led us through the standards, as well as the instructional shifts. We took that learning further by collaborating with our department chairs at all three high schools within the district, Matia, Bigwa, and Wabanzi, and those department chairs provided some professional learning opportunities for that committee as well, to help provide some coherence of instruction from elementary all the way through high school graduation. We have maintained a focus on regard to the standards and having a continuity of instructional approach, as I mentioned. So, our, this, what we're bringing to you this evening is an expansion of that group of 25. So, considering the size and scope of our district and the work that we'll be doing with elementary social studies standards, we have begun work, we took it from 25 members. This year, we are working with 60-plus members across the district. So, before, we had approximately one staff member per elementary school, and now that committee has become a committee of multiple staff members at each elementary school. This group of 60, doing the committee work this year, includes kindergarten through fifth grade teachers, support staff members, EL bilingual staff members, and an equity ambassador as well. This group of 60 has already begun that same strand of work that the first 25 went through. They have already been led by Mary Allen Denielz, a state, a state instructional specialist, has already provided some professional development for this expanded group of 60. We will continue that work and unpack the standards and take a look at the instructional shifts. But this group of 60 will actually take the draft questions that the initial group crafted and put them in place in the classroom. We'll be doing the work to try to see what revisions should we make, what questions fit perfectly, how do the kids respond, what can we tweak? So, we will be spending some time with this larger group this year, taking our draft questions and giving them a pilot go. And, and finally, in February, our Institute Day focus for the largest group, which will be approximately 600 elementary teachers, will be that same pattern of introduction to standards, taking a look at the key shifts, and then having a sense of what, what makes a question compelling and supporting in the arena of elementary social studies. So, this slide highlights exactly what we'll be doing next. We're going to have that ongoing professional development, both in-house and with state partnership. We are intending to try out our K-5 draft questions with that group of 60 and getting those revisions and making those as necessary, with the intention to come back to the board in the spring with a proposed curriculum for potential approval. And should that be the case, we would begin resource curation efforts following board approval of the curriculum in the spring. Thank you for the opportunity and the time, and I'm, I'm not sure if there are any questions?
Sure, Board members with questions. Ms. Dumbing?
Thank you for having me on the presentation. I did, I was going to, this is where the bill of presentation and the equity lens is coming from. I see that equity lens specifically mentioned anywhere in here, so I, and the work that we've done, continuing on the committee, and then we roll out to our teachers and staff that we, that, that some of your, this is some of that, that is part of the thought process, and we need to, you know, roll out with a, with a.
Certainly, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Grover, did you have a question?
I do have a question. I understand, I understand that this is not the curriculum proposal, but it's developing the curriculum. Just a general question, we have a lot of mandate. If you can speak to how you incorporate that in the curriculum?
Certainly. So, the incorporation of state mandates and what that looks like in terms of the curriculum. Typically, the mandates are associated with content. So, myself, our middle school director, and our high school director, with any legislative mandates that come down for content in a curriculum, we take a look at our coursework across K-12 initially to see where it fits. Some of those are banded more for certain levels, and they may give recommendations for where we could include that content with those levels. The content itself is usually separate from the curriculum. The curriculum is typically what we want kids to know and be able to demonstrate, and then the content is a vehicle for us to be able to get there. So, for instance, if they're referencing, making sure that we have some civic-minded content as a legislative mandate, we see where that would fit. Sometimes it fits in our ELA curriculum with some of the stories that we're including. Sometimes it fits, again, with particular coursework, or sometimes we need to find a way to make sure that we insert more of an opportunity that hasn't been there before. So, anytime there is a legislative mandate, all three levels take a look at where is it currently in existence and where do we need to make changes if necessary.
And where is it age-appropriate, as well?
Certainly.
Other questions?
I, I...
Ms. Peale?
So, if I got it right, for the elementary in virtual and hybrid, the science and the social studies is more independent learning time, for the most part? And, and so, I was, I was looking at your slide seven, and I was thinking, that's a beautiful conversation at a dinner table, so, is that the kind of homework assignments?
Certainly, certainly. So, one thing of note is that these questions you see up here will be what we are moving teachers towards, though a lot of this actually already happens. Our teachers are very skilled at asking open-ended questions to kind of provoke thinking. I, I do think with the science and social studies and being independent, the teachers are, are doing a tandem dance with that. Some of our content can vary, with science and social studies at elementary, is very linked to our ELA curriculum. So, for instance, they, a nonfiction story about bugs, and then with the video they may watch in the afternoon for their independent time may be a video about bugs. So, there is still a link. That independent time that you see in the afternoon is not necessarily in isolation, but it is an opportunity for practice. Additionally, that science and social studies time does provide either teacher-created or produced videos that will spark conversation when then they have the Zoom conversation the next day with a teacher. But agreed, this type of questioning, the discourse, is really at the heart of it. So, that, whether that happens in Zoom or when we return hybrid, this type of questioning back and forth is compelling, for sure.
I, I just got to say again, this is how we get good curriculum and good practice, is through pilots. And this isn't the first year we're starting this, this is our second year. This is what makes our district great, is when we do this kind of work in a patient and deliberate manner, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, guys. Thank you so much for the presentation and the information.
Thank you for your time.
Since we just elected Mr. Rising to be our delegate, we do, at our next meeting, we'll have to vote on the resolution and position statements from the Illinois Association of School Boards. I thought if we give Mr. Rising now some time just to discuss those and have a brief conversation as we get ready to vote at our next meeting. Mr. Rising?
Yep, so, there's, we've discussed this at the last couple meetings, as far as the process goes.
Mr. Rising, can you get a little closer?
Oh, yep, sorry. We've discussed the process at the last couple board meetings, privately, individually with each board member. I've asked for their feedback regarding the resolutions. This year, there will be 12 items that come up for a vote, eight of those being new resolutions, three of those being reaffirmations, and one new belief statement, which was submitted by our district. Board members submitted questions to me. I looked into those questions through IASB representation, and I provided feedback to the board members. Leading up to tonight's meeting, I asked if there were any of the resolutions that board members wanted to discuss. The ones that were brought up, and we can have a brief discussion on this, if we need to carry over that discussion until our November 2nd meeting, I'm okay with that. We will not be voting on anything tonight. We will have the vote on the resolutions at the next meeting. But the resolutions that board members wanted to discuss briefly were Resolution 2, Resolution 4, and Resolutions 7 and 8. 7 and 8 are almost identical. Those should be pretty quick. If you don't mind me going out of order, is that okay, if I just do 7 and 8 really quick, or?
Sure.
Okay. So, I provided some feedback, I believe, on 7 and 8, yes, and I provided a document with you today, just in case you don't have the email that I sent to all of you. So, this was in regards to the pre-K, or pre-K teacher licensure. I'm sorry, was that, no, I'm sorry. I apologize. It was a local control pandemic. I'm sorry. 7 and 8, the local control pandemic. So, the, the feedback that I gave you on that, and actually, the response and the answer came directly from Ben Schwarm, who I think we all know. Did we, did any, did... If we need to carry over that discussion until our November 2 meeting, I'm okay with that. We will not be voting on anything tonight. We will have the vote on the resolutions at the next meeting. But the resolutions that board members wanted to discuss briefly were Resolution 2, Resolution 4, and Resolutions 7 and 8. 7 and 8 are almost identical. Those should be pretty quick. If you don't mind me going out of order, is that okay if I just do 7 and 8 really quick, or?
Sure.
Okay. So I provided some feedback, I believe, on 7 and 8, yes. And I provided a document with you today, just in case you don't have the email that I sent to all of you. So this was in regards to the pre-K, or pre-K teacher licensure. I'm sorry. Was that, no, I'm sorry. I apologize. It was a local control pandemic. I'm sorry. 7 and 8, the local control pandemic. So the feedback that I gave you on that, and actually, the response and the answer came directly from Ben Schwarm, who I think we all know. Did we, did any, did either the person that submitted or anybody else wanted to address anything regarding Resolution 7 and 8? And I'll just briefly summarize. The submitting district for 7 asked that the Illinois Association of School Boards shall encourage members of the US Congress, the Illinois General Assembly, and related administrative agencies and state and federal courts to take a regional approach to response to national health emergencies. The resolution committee, actually, their recommendation was to do adopt that one. The number 8 resolution was very similar, and the resolution committee's recommendation on that one was do not adopt because it was very similar to the, to number 7. So I don't know if anybody had any questions on that or wanted to discuss that one further. I thought it was a little easier to discuss. Yep.
Did any board members have any positions that were adverse to the positions taken by the subcommittee? Because I think that would direct where we would want to focus our discussion.
That's a fair question. I did not ask for board members, I did not ask individual board members directly if they disagreed with any of the resolutions, so I do not know that question. I just.
Does anybody show hands? Anybody? Okay.
I just got one. Yeah, number two.
Yeah. It was my inquiry, so.
Yes, and for me, Mr. Karuba, some of them needed clarification.
Sure.
You know, the gun storage, I would almost like to get into a conversation with other board members to see where they feel on that position in terms of whether or not that is a purview of a school board or IASB. So that was one. The pre-K licensure, I would like to have some discussion. And as Mr. Rising said, 7 and 8, I'm kind of interested in people's take on local control. As it, and then as it relates to things like a pandemic, when there's already resolutions for local control, do we want to get into those weeds? And last time we had those conversations, my mind's changed just by, my mind changed just by listening to others. So those resolutions, I would like to talk about, I guess, again, look at them once more. And if there's things we need to talk about, that's great, but if we can, like, group those resolutions where we feel that we're okay, we can take a quick vote on that and spend time on the three or four resolutions that we need to discuss.
I apologize, Mark. I kind of jumped in there, but that was my inquiry. If we got any direct response on that.
No, so I guess going back to 7 and 8, I'm assuming all of us agree with the recommendation of do not adopt of 8 because it is very much similar to 7. Are there any concerns or discussions around number 7? Or does anybody need any further clarification on number 7?
I do have a concern, and I, again, I would like to talk about it. IASB does have other resolutions about local control. I get nervous if this has some political bent to this. And I sometimes question whether we already have regions and people are making local decisions. I think we have stuff already in place, and I'm questioning why this is necessary.
Just reading Ben's response from this, and if you look at that on the email that I, or the paper I sent here, left all of you, about halfway through there, it says the consensus at the end was that the submitting district was more specifically concerned about the overly broad regions used to determine safety. Many remote rural areas with no health outbreaks were lumped in with larger urban areas 100 miles away that had high infection rates. So the language was modified to make it more specific to the statewide approach in times of health emergencies. To me, I understand where you're coming from, how one could perceive this as political. But to me, right now, what we're currently dealing with and have talked about tonight is while we take direction from the Illinois Department of Health, the Illinois State Board of Education, and in this case, DuPage County Health Department, a lot of this still is revolved around, and the governor even mentioned it today, around local control of school boards having some of those decisions. You know, the, we have to also remember here too is that it's just a position that IASB takes. So in other words, if legislators go to, you know, if they want their input from the school boards, you know, the legal team of the Illinois Association of School Boards is going to say, yes, basically, our school board members across the state wished that, you know, there be a regional response to a national health emergency. I think state always trumps regional. I just, I didn't see any, I didn't, too many red flags didn't go up for me personally because I think we're already seeing essentially what this says. So I didn't get overly concerned that it was overreached by the district. I don't know.
And that's fine, and I guess I'll reread it again and see if it makes sense to me. I just don't see a need for that resolution when local control is already a foundational belief of the Illinois Association of School Boards. That's just me.
Why? But we're not having a discussion tonight. We're going to have it next time, correct?
It's a discussion item, but it's 10 o'clock, and yeah, usually we start dropping off.
If we push it off too much of the discussion next time, and we've got three discussion items on the agenda in addition to this, so that would make the fourth agenda item, plus we have to vote on the resolutions at next meeting, it'll make next meeting that much longer too. So if we don't want to get into too much discussion and we'd rather just save our votes, if you need further clarification on number 7, let me know. If there's a certain, you know, piece that you want to say with this resolution, I say, say it now.
I'll say it. I don't quite get what you guys are getting at. It just seems to be saying what Illinois kind of, the approach they took finally for COVID. So, I mean, and even then, it's still local control that decides it in the end. So I don't have a problem with the resolution.
Yeah, I agree with Kathy on this. I mean, if you look at the resolution in and of itself, it looks pretty benign. You might not agree with some of the rationale that goes into that, but yeah. I think if you just look at the resolution, that's agreeable. That's what the governor adopted with Region 8 and all that stuff. So I support the resolution committee's position on this one.
Okay. That help?
Yeah. All right, what's number 2?
All right. 2 is regarding gun storage. So currently, the law in Illinois is that all gun owners in the state of Illinois should, should make sure that there are safety or locking mechanisms for any guns that exist in a home if there are children in the home that are under 14. This resolution that the submitting district submitted wants, and I'll read it to you, "The Illinois Association of School Boards shall support and advocate for the legislation which strengthens child safety gun storage laws in the state of Illinois, requiring gun owners to store firearms, whether they are loaded or unloaded, in a securely locked container if a person under the age of 18 is likely to gain access to the weapon without permission." Again, the law that currently exists is under 14. This is a resolution and a supporting position statement by IASB that school districts advocate for more safety around firearms if there is students or children in the home between that age of 15 and 18. The position that the resolution committee took on this was to do not adopt. Their rationale around do not adopt for this was that the vast majority of IASB position statements deal directly with issues that happen inside of a school district. This proposal would be a departure from that practice, and the committee questioned whether the association resources should be spent on noneducational issues. While the committee considers the argument of the submitting district on the potential impact of students, the majority of members felt this was not an issue for IASB's involvement. Let the discussion commence.
I have a question about the Florida Department of Education. This is a question that I think is important, and I think it's a term of discussion that I think is important. But I think that they're saying that they can call the Department of Education to determine this topic. And I thought maybe that, you know, if we are, if the current law indicates that anyone who is in the neighborhood should have access, I thought maybe that if you look at, if you make it already, access and potential opportunity to use firearms, armed, whatever it is, and everything for, you know, the community.
I guess where the question lies, is this something that, again, the rationale was this is not educational-based or has to do?
I don't know the rationale, but the current thing, the impact of, you know, the potential access and potential impact.
No, I'm saying our resolution committee at the state level wasn't sure they should support this because it is a position that would be unique to IASB, the positions they've taken in the past.
Yeah, I disagree with the rationale too. I think if we're talking about the safety of our children, having access to guns, having access to guns is one of the number one reasons why suicide is completed. And we've seen enough of it. Children are in our schools. It's education-related to me.
So does anybody have an opposing opinion? Because that's what I'm struggling with, and that's why I wanted discussion, which was, does anybody agree that IASB has not traditionally taken these stands? And do they feel it's valid?
I do not personally support it, and I'll tell you why. I think it's an absolutely wonderful idea. I hope the legislators in our state take a look at it. I do not think it's a position IASB should take because I think it's overstepping and overreaching the bounds of IASB when you're getting into what's personally happened in people's homes. I do not think that is a position that IASB should take. I have no problem if our legislators take that position. They are more than, more than welcome to do that. I just think we are treading on unusual chartered territories when we start as a, as a school board saying what takes place in people's homes. And again, that's not to say that I don't agree with it. I do agree with it. I think anybody should have safety things in place for, if there are guns in the home. I just think it's, I also think it would be a departure from us as a board to support that. And again, these are apples-to-oranges issues, but the position we took, for instance, with recreational marijuana, was we know that marijuana can affect students, but we felt it wasn't our place as a board to advise a city council on what takes place in people's homes. So I think while we understand the impact of drugs on students, we did not want to advise the city council of a position, even though we thought that the increased drug use in the community could have an impact. But we just felt it wasn't our place to advise them. I kind of look at this as the same thing, even though it's a totally different issue, that I worry that school boards are going in uncharted waters, but that's just my position.
Sure, thanks. I appreciate that position.
No.
Okay, I do not support the resolution. I think whoever drafted this resolution does not understand current gun law in Illinois. And it's poorly worded, so two reasons. If you were to just say strengthen child gun safety law, fine. Then it makes a requirement on storage. And if you look at the current law, it talks about knowing, knows and has reason, doesn't have a Floyd card. It's a lot more particular. You could be a minor with a Floyd card and own a gun. How does this resolution apply to you? So I think it needs work before I can support it. I think it is, I think we can agree on the concept, but I don't like the wording. It talks about being likely to gain access. The current law talks about knows or has reasons to believe. Those are like legal standards. Likely is not defined in the law very well. So I have a lot of reservations about how this is worded. Can't support.
So you would agree with? So you would agree with the recommendation from IASB not support?
Yes, or I could take it to some kind of, like, agree in concept, but you got to rework it. I mean, I, it's not so out there that I couldn't agree with the intent, but I think they got to come back with it and try to make it either, just keep the first part that talks about strengthening and not go into the details of requiring, or the details need to be more in line with, I think, the current law.
Well, the, the submitting district for this particular resolution appealed. So when the resolution committee came back and said, "We do not support your resolution," the submitting district said they wanted to appeal, and they will make an appeal at the delegate assembly meeting on, on November 14th, okay? Leading up to that November 14th delegate assembly meeting, there is a meeting this Wednesday afternoon at noon, in which I will be attending, and there's also a meeting on November 5th. Both the 21st meeting and the November 5th meeting are for representative delegate assembly members to participate in discussion, an online discussion call. Only, only one representative can attend. Since there is that October 21st meeting before our next Board of Education meeting, November 2nd, I can let you know on November 2nd what additional information I garnered about this particular resolution. My guess is not much is going to change. The resolution committee is still going to say do not adopt. There may be some questions around it, but I don't think it's going to change much. What will take place at the delegate assembly meeting regarding this resolution is that the submitting district will submit their appeal, and they'll make a statement to the delegate assembly members on why they feel this resolution should be considered. At that point, a vote will be taking, taken by the delegate assembly to, if they want to consider the submitting district's appeal. If the delegate assembly says, "No, we're not considering your appeal," they vote it down, no further discussion, and then the vote is taken on the way it currently is. So who knows? The delegate assemblies could vote, they support the, the appeal, and then they could vote on, you know, so, so the delegate assembly members can overturn what the resolution committee put, put forward as a recommendation. Answering that?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. No, I, I don't think, no, we, we can't rewrite it, it is what it is. So it'll either get voted up or voted down.
We like to rewrite things.
Guess is if it gets voted down, that submitting district will probably come back next year with better wording, but who knows? Okay, so I think we can move on unless anybody else wanted to say something about that. Did you?
Yes, and I hope, you know, it's getting late, and I hope you heard what Mark said, they got to take a vote to take the vote. You know, which is, again, sometimes I feel this process gets convoluted a little bit, and taking a vote to take a vote seems to be convoluted to me, but that's just me.
Or in the position, in this one, you have to take a vote to take a vote to take a vote, so, yeah. Four was the other one, that was the pre-K teacher licensure. The submitting district had a lot, I don't know if you read that resolution, it was pretty specific and detailed. That is why, in essence, why the res- resolution committee, I think, if I'm paraphrasing, their rationale of why they said do not adopt is because it was a little too rigid and specific in its approach. The submitting district agreed with the resolution committee. Wanted to state their case in front of the delegate assembly, and then the resolution committee submitted for that district a rewritten resolution, which you'll see at the very end of that. So it was interesting that, Laurie, to your point, the resolution committee came back with a rewritten resolution for that submitting district. I still don't think the submitting district is happy about it. So, you know, the, the main concern for resolution committee regarding this original resolution was that it would be too rigid with adding, add testing requirements that could have an adverse effect on filling teacher positions in some areas of the state, especially given teacher shortages. So while they did feel it was a good idea, each individual district had...
I kind of, I agreed with them on this one, because I thought, like, you know how we have the transfer of teachers' licenses? And I thought if we impose these restrictions, it's going to be harder to transfer teachers. And that was my thinking. So I thought, we could, like you said, we could have that in the job description if we wanted, but we're looking for teachers, especially if we're looking for diverse teachers, or...
Well, and I think, you know, and we could get confirmation from administration on this eventually, but I think we do have something in there where some of our teachers do have some of these, or maybe Mike can even speak to this, some of our teachers do have some of these re-sour, is this particular resolution.
I don't have a problem with this resolution, with the do not adopt.
You, you agree with them?
Yeah.
What about the new one?
The new one?
The resolution after that?
Oh, yeah, because that...
The teacher shortage one?
No, the resolution that the committee came up with, on its own...
So in other words, if this, if, if the delegate assembly supports the recommendation of the resolution committee of do not adopt, that submitting district also has the ability to come back and say, "Okay, well, would you consider the rewritten resolution as the resolution committee submitted," which is at the very end of that? So be resolved that the Illinois Association of School Boards shall support initiatives in teacher preparation programming that prepares teachers to be trained in scientifically proven...
That's good, you know?
Yeah, it looks good.
So you would accept, so, so we might have, need to have two votes on this particular one next time, one that supports the, or doesn't support, the resolution committee's recommendation, and then we might need to also have a vote on, because if, I want to be prepared if it gets to that secondary wording that I know to either support or reject that as well. So just, not much on that one.
Okay. Any other comments, questions?
We might as well talk about the teacher shortage one.
Okay, do not adopt.
Do adopt.
Do adopt, yeah.
Do adopt.
Turn the lights off.
Well, you caught me on one that I wasn't totally prepared on, so...
Is anybody in agreement on this?
No, this, I did not get any submitted questions on this or concerns.
I'm, I'm trying to remember. I had a little note here, that's not very explanatory. Oh. Yeah, it's, the provisional teacher licenses, expand issuance of that. I'm a little unsure about that. Are we trying to correct a shortage by bringing...
Do you want to read through that and do some research?
Yeah, because I want to understand the implications of the, of expanding the provisional license.
Fair. I mean, some of these, I go back and read it again, and I'm like, okay, maybe I, you know. So, yeah, you want to just let me know?
Yeah.
Okay, and I'll just, I'll talk to Ben or whatever, you can even pick up the phone and call Ben.
Others?
Otherwise, I'm, I think I'm good.
Good, great. Can we move on?
Please.
Last, is this legislative update, there is a LEN meeting Friday. LEN's going to talk about school finances, we get information, I will pass that on to you. And again, it's the Legislative Education Network of DuPage. I have no Board of Education update, I need a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Did we have a session?
Yes.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.